Hopefully, so I get as close to calling this meeting. Do some opening ceremonies. Thank you very much.
Well, the thing is, this beautiful world is inspired by history and different things that mean the community. All for the people to live in, the human experience, and also, it can also look to see these various things that are important and relevant in our community. I found this, the city is a kaleidoscope of colors, cultures, and stories. Cities are like a masterpiece, paintings painted of the colors of humans, women, history, culture, and dreams, creating a stunning day that portrays the richness and diversity of life. I thought even in a small community in Paris, that statement is very true, that as a community, we paint this beautiful masterpiece of our community, and it needs all the diversity of every different person that is a part of our community, and all the different situations and the things that are speaking to us, to make this masterpiece. And with that, I'd like us to ask a question.
I'm delighted to be here today to answer your comments or questions. One, please.
Thank you, Kate. Very, very, very appreciate that. So with that, all this meeting on April 10th, the Order of Nibbly City Council. And let's do a roll call if you would, Garrett.
Erin, Matt. Hey, Sweeten.
Hey, Norman Larson.
Larry Jacobson. We have Nick Henske with Planning Commission Chair here tonight. Thanks, Nick. I think you're going to give us a report and then just try to do this. I hate it when I try to think of people's names with my Levi Robert, City Planner, Justin Mon, Nibbly City Manager. We've got Tom Dickinson, Nibbly City Engineer. We have Cheryl Bodley, Clerk and Recorder, Clerk, Recorder, all of the above. Thank you. Rod Elwood, Parks Department, Jared Pratt, Streets, Parks, Public Works. Thanks. And then right in front of him, Steve Elias in the Public Works. What am I missing? Oh, man. Only half a point off. Sorry, Jared. Great to see you all here. With that, I ask the Council to consider approval of the March 13th and March 25th. We had a joint meeting with the Park and Right Committee. And if you're so inclined, maybe take a look at tonight's agenda. Thank you. Have you been wishing to approve both sets of minutes and the current agenda? Just what we're looking for, Nate. Thank you very much. We have a motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Erin. The motion for you is to approve both sets of minutes as presented and tonight's agenda discussion on that. Seeing none of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thanks so much. Next, we have an opportunity for any member of the public to address the City Council on any topic you would like. Nobody signed up, but that doesn't mean that you don't have that opportunity. If you're here to talk about something that's on the agenda, it'd be appropriate for you to wait until that agenda item comes up. But that doesn't mean that anyone who's here who would like to have anything to say to the Council is not invited. You are invited at this time. One, two, three. Okay, so thank you for being here nevertheless, and we will move right along to the Planning Commission Report. And Nick, you're going to do that for us? Nick is the Chair of the, despite his appearance, he's a very respectable.
Can I take my hat?
Should I put mine back on?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give a quick report, during the March 20th, Planning Commission meeting, we met and discussed a few on the agenda for you this evening. To leave me to talk about that, from the items that I introduced for you. Additional to these, we talked about a conditional use permit for our research and development company. And we did a very meaningful group. Sure that'll show up on future meeting. Another topic we're discussing, kind of worked through is the RM zone. We're trying to do some thoughtful research and native reconfiguring of what that looks like. I think we've got some good ideas and good momentum. Potentially, we'd like to take that zone overall, that I think will help advising their city, frankly, where it's needed, particularly in this zone. And then we did discuss the Planning Commission goals for the year. So I'm really happy to come up and discuss any specifics to the items before you on the agenda. As far as a planning commission perspective, if you'd like, you can just call me back here. Discuss our thoughts and the way we come to, or recommendations, yes or no.
Perfect. Thanks. Thank you. We appreciate the planning missions efforts, your leadership as Chair there. We'll definitely put you on the spot on a couple of these agenda items. Okay, next on the agenda is CAPS. We have Alina Oling. Am I saying that right? We've corresponded, but not sure I've ever said your name to your face, so. This is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Alina is going to give us some awareness from CAPS's point of view. Thank you.
Yeah. And we have different things that are one and just different information to be aware of. I want to start by just sharing a little bit about CAPS. For anyone who didn't know, CAPS has been in Valley since 1976. So CAPS has been around fifty years, which is something that we're proud of and excited about. And at the time, growth has happened. One of the things that I think was really exciting to be aware of is that CAPS has we are expanding into items, and we have seen a lot of success in that space where survivors have closer accessibility to services. And that way, we're also being able to use the full scope of services within. But like was said, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and knowing that supporting survivors on a sexual assault is a lot of advocacy. It's about feeling, and it's about breaking down many mental barriers that survivors face. There's a lot of different barriers that survivors face, and I think often we think of the physical barriers. Obviously, also emotional and psychological barriers that keep survivors from being too often these barriers, shame, fear, societal stigma, and like I had mentioned, lack of resources keep survivors from reaching out for help. At CAPS, our goal is to ensure survivors have access to confidential support, legal advocacy, and trauma-informed care. And we can't do this work alone. Through education, outreach, and partnerships with health care providers, law enforcement, local businesses, government leaders, and many others, we're strengthening the networks that prevent violence and support survivors on their path to healing. What we need to, we need businesses, educators, civic leaders, because each of us has a role to play in shifting cultural perception and fostering belief in empathy, making sure survivors know that they are not alone. One of the biggest barriers that survivors face is shame. And by definition, shame is a painful, isolated feeling that tells someone they are flawed or unloved. Shame doesn't just impact survivors of sexual violence. It can affect anyone struggling with mental health, even self doubt. And too often, it's shame that keeps people dependent. Recognizing this, we have developed a prevention-focused curriculum called Shame Free Conversations. This is designed to help adults support youth by navigating difficult topics in a way that fosters openness, trust, and healing. It's these conversations that we have found prevent violence and harm, while also reducing feelings of helplessness and fear. A shame-free conversation is rooted in empathy, understanding, and acceptance. It's about choosing words that make people feel safe and rather than ashamed or dismissed. To help write these conversations, we use a framework that we, and an acronym called SAFE. And so there's a full-length training, and I'll leave a poster about it. To start your thinking on this, this acronym is S stands for specific. We want to encourage everyone to be clear and direct in communication. A stands for approachable, creating safe and welcoming spaces. And I think it happens well before these conversations occur. Acknowledging feelings is F, which is validating someone's emotion and experience. We know that with trauma, we all maybe we have a similar experience, but the experiences are different. Their experiences to the benefit of others as well. And then E is empowering, which is focusing on strengths and solutions. And so this could be reframing. Maybe someone seems bossy, but reframing that to be that they are a leader, or taking the opportunity to focus within something, as someone's flexibility to strengthen within them. Above all, this is underlined with belief, because when someone shares their experience, believing then is the most powerful step we can take. As a community, we can create safer spaces and break these cycles of shame. But programs like Shame Free Conversations, they can exist, but never be utilized unless we as communities and so we really encourage you to think through your methods, whether that's professional outside of a professional setting, outside of this role, maybe within this role, but thinking of it where there's an audience who could benefit from learning to engage in these conversations. Like I said, I think sometimes these conversations can be intimidating, but we know that they're really important. Because when you feel like they can have someone to talk to, it really does break down a barrier of shame and embarrassment that we're finding how we do but also adults. And so that's exactly my ask of you. I will leave some posters here. But this curriculum has been approved through local clergy, including the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And so we encourage you in any of your to find ways to integrate this. If that's fifteen minutes where we introduce or do the full hour presentation, we've seen it be really successful. So I will leave these, but I did also want to give you an opportunity if you have any questions regarding this, or just generally.
Thank you. You guys performed a fantastic service for our community. We appreciate that. Do you have questions? Kate, please.
It's definitely the right question to ask, the topic that you just shared specifically. I actually recently, within the past days, something that has given me very specific, right? We continue for a support in someone who's in a situation where we're talking to, who continues to go back. And the individual that I continue to, but they become weary. And today, it's not fine, but it means feeling emotionally that you're trying to respond to.
I think that those can be really hard feelings, because we know, I mean, there's so many things, right? Like you said, we know this person has a story. We know that they're being honest, and we do believe their story. And I think that's one of the things that's really important for whoever is in the supporting role, is it can become challenging because there is certain right when we're hearing these stories. And I think a lot of those feelings are really fear feelings. We're afraid for this person. The other thing that can be really challenging, we have survivors who have been suffering from fears. And the thing is, often it takes, you know, building trust or that courage to come, because I think a lot of times survivors don't know what they're getting. And so I think one of the things that you can share with that supporting person is exactly what CAPS does. And so questions that often come up. Is my story really wanting to be shared? And that is yes. For a number of reasons, we are a confidential agency. That even includes, let's say this individual wanted support and wanted to reach out. They could call our crisis line and never share their name. So they would like, I want to get a follow-up for what resources are available, what I could potentially do. They can access support without ever, incomplete, being included. The other thing is, is they think sometimes feel like their story isn't big enough, and doesn't require service. And so just to showing them that any experience to master your session, that's kind of qualified for service. On the flip side of that, sometimes people feel like their story is too complex. It's too hard. It's unbelievable. And just, I don't know how to assure this any other way, but we've seen a lot of things, and we know the complexity. And with that, we have to also give a choice to survivors. Abuse is all about power and control. And for survivors of whether it be domestic or sexual violence in any form, what's been taken from that person is power and control. And so while it is really hard, we do have to let people work within their timeline. And like I said, sometimes that's a couple of months, sometimes that's years. I've spoken to survivors who what happened to them happened probably thirty-plus years ago, and they just are finding a feeling share for any new reason. So I'll just now leave that it is hard to be in a supportive role, especially when you do have really good intentions and want help for that person. And also balancing that with, there's probably doctors that are keeping the person safe to come forward, whether it's their own feelings, shame, or their user may potentially be doing things that is making them feel like they can't.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Good job. It's important.
It is important. So let us know how we can support you.
Thank you, Alina. Next on the agenda, it dovetails, I think in lots of ways, we have a homeless services report in Cache Valley, and I have a little bit of background, a group of undergraduate students at Utah State University working through the Social Work Department and the Transforming Communities Institute recently inducted a study examining community attitudes and beliefs on homelessness, homelessness services in Cache County. So you're going to share your work with us, and And I have some names here. Rachel. Wait, Didericson?
Right.
And Caitlin Line. I assume that's you two. Okay. And you have some others with you. You're welcome to introduce them or share, share your work with us, please.
Oh, is that?
So we're there, posting out in Dallas, three, and I suppose. So she followed the great progression to. Was this last? They did. They lived on homelessness in Cache Valley. And then just did, I was very. Everything. I'm looking what he. Issue.
Hey, can I, can I just interrupt for a second? We, we actually are one of the most popular YouTube channels in Cache Valley, these meetings. And so every so often we get comments from folks that are watching YouTube that they can hear us a lot better. I know it's hard, but if you like focus your voice right into the mic, I know, I know how different. You can take it out of the holder and hold it in your hand, however you want to do it, but that, that'll help, that'll help people that are, that are subscribers to our channel.
That's what we found is sort of you. There's a question that we have. And how we can address this issue. And.
Yeah, not working.
So we passed out a document, sheet of paper, and we'd like you guys to kind of look over. The answer to the question, these are the questions that, a few of the questions that you have sort of gave. So you can actually see what were your respective beliefs. And as we go with some of the questions, we'll see some of this, because there's obviously I wanted to show you this one. But first, in all of this, we're going to talk about what both of you need to pay. So, and first, you have demonstrated that the community has witnessed. On the level to maybe take count and change or. Be a to individuals experiencing homelessness within Cache County. And 15% of those were children, individuals. And even if homelessness is not directly defined, our neighbors and loved ones have witnessed homelessness in their friends and family members. So 8% have experienced homelessness themselves. 60% of people personally know someone who has experienced homelessness. And 26% of people personally know two or more persons who have experienced homelessness. And this is from our survey. Just what you take in this quote, we also gathered some qualitative information that gives space for you to respond and have. And work a little bit with. Cache Valley, in Cache Valley, homelessness has already a variety of causes and contributing factors. They've a few of them. But it's not just person responsibility, but also it's domestic violence, it's housing costs. And so as we look at some more data on the expressions, it's important to understand that it's a local issue close to home. For lots of, of people here, and there's a lot of complexity to. Despite this complexity, the community just have noticed that lots of services are inaccessible to people experiencing homelessness. So you can see that four least accessible services, according to community reports, are childcare, legal services, agency-based housing assistance, and emergency shelters. Patient says, you can tell on your, this half sheets of paper, questions one and two are answered. And this data is really interesting to me because it was quite surprising. 90% of respondents said that they agree, strongly agree that there should be a 24-hour resource center open year-round. That's overwhelming support in the Valley for mentioning that resource. And not just that, but there's an, an degree of need and the new effective use of terms. 78% of respondents believed you go there. So huge support for addressing this issue heavily. As well, you can see that people are comfortable with having a resource center in Cache County. And their resource center will be an overnight place for them to stay. We've noticed in our survey, reframing people's shelter to a resource center is a lot more positive. That's a little more favorable. So they are comfortable with having a resource center in Cache County. 87%, respondents agreed. As we move closer to their neighborhood, there starts to be a little bit more discomfort, and that's understandable. As well, we noticed that bringing in a resource center, a lot of people have concerns that it will bring in people to a community. And only 34% of people actually think that this is true. As I take in these other quotes, as you can tell, there's a wide variety of opinions and response that just handful. We have some positive, supportive, changing resources, and some negative. Percent is strongly agrees or agree that there should be a resource center to support that. There's still the 10% that's supportive. And so it's important to understand that all of those voices do exist and proposals come up in the future that you will hear both. And to keep these stats in your. So what is that from this theme? Homelessness is increasing in Cache County. The survey data shows that there's also a lot of understanding of some services to address this need. And learning what our fellow community members think about this, these issues can help shape our decisions, the biases that we. We asked that you would connect with some local service providers to better understand this issue, as well as refer to the data that we've prepared on fires. And reach out to one of our lead researcher who we can. A fire as well. Desire to look more into this research as we push. There's many, many questions, but just around that sheet as well.
So lead researcher, please.
Dorothy Wilk, she's over here.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for, for taking this on. And, and can, can you, I, I know some of us, what, what is a pit count, please?
The pit count. So end of January, every year, tears, and they will go out and talk to.
Okay. And why is that important?
In order to talk solutions for an issue, you really understand how the issue is. And so when you go out, we're actually going to get some gauge. How real it is here, and to be, and see questions, some of the circumstantial things. So that's how we know. In, for example, the 2024 data, we have 48 individuals experiencing homelessness. 15% of them completely unsheltered, the rest staying back, so everywhere. And bringing their community resources. And we know the format, so how the state lines was in, over one third were. Experiences with, so I got, I was informed how we can make decisions and policy to be the most effective. We care about the community. You guys care for the community. And so it's more to actually understand the issue to move forward and address.
Right. Thank you, Caitlin. And I think it also helps the Federal Association of Governments receive federal funding to, to help mitigate this, the homelessness problem. So I'll, I'll be quiet. Sorry. I just appreciate that presentation.
I've got a few questions. Who would respondents, like, help this survey get distributed?
Yeah, so we, we have a survey. It's an online survey. And it's spread through social media, through table events about the community, door. Door.
Door enters. We know about Tarki, while he seems a.
So. Any of the elements to reference, there was potential for slight bias because those who participated. Issue. But it's a pretty. Um, it seems like there's a variety. It's a census, maybe some. Um, I don't know. We have, I can read on, are many of these people, you know, like homeless individuals, there's a lot of this homelessness because we can't afford it. Yeah.
Vina and May Jordan, you could give some expansion. The top causes tend to be same costs and then domestic violence. I understand the data that we've seen. Actually, the housing costs were in high. Most of them, most of them work. Yeah. And, and the pink dot page, the percentage of unemployed population is 10.8%. That's 10.8% of employed population here in Cache County. So even those who are. They work those strong efforts to, to afford it, able to.
So that kind of leads to a question, city, if we look at, and zoning laws, we can get what types of housing, city. And so we, we've had a lot of conversation around affordable or attainable housing. So do you have any suggestions for us as a city about how we can go about trying to turn out and maintain or control affordable or attainable housing? I mean, that's a big question, but just coming from like college students, for somebody who's thinking about this issue, do you have any suggestions for us in the city to support this issue?
That's a hard question. If you haven't answered. Simply, yeah.
I, um, my, my scope is more the doubt. Like a specific. Suggestion. The key is in that it's important and it is. Yes, okay. Sometimes jump on it. So, and that, I love, I think that, you know, some of the things that we know. So, so. It's a chair, people design. And you know, the things that we. They need. All this. Space, right? Being able to walk to a grocery store, being able to. And Cache Valley is. And it's. Accessible. Looking at the state. Those relationships, right? So, you know, it's, it's just an perspective, a mission for you. With this data, that is that. Issue specifically, and proposals are right up without the zoning law, housing, all of the like direct documentation that you keep. How supportive a community is. Their thoughts, I think. The common perception is that supportive and a lot of people, you can see there, there's great numeric support for it. But one of the things that we. Only 17.5%. The data sheet, but 17.5% of residents believe that their fellow community members have the same perspective. So we have the numbers, but they're related to their numbers. And so the ideas of them to remember that those do exist and to reduce assumptions.
Megan, please. Um, a little more subject question. It's the, the social work program that you tested, it's going to include it. Throughout the state. Was this survey just part of Cache County? That was it? Or have you done undergraduate work throughout the state? Interesting.
So it was kind of based on, we have some students who say. Cash County, Utah County, and Carver County. So. This is from Cache County, we actually, I think it's kind of interesting, again, just looking at kind of the diversity of services in those. Sharing as well.
What will you all be doing with the data then? Is it going into a published report? Okay. And where can we find that?
So. First, and looking. Individuals experiencing. Someone who is. Experiencing this, so. And keep believing in us. Please, yeah, that you see. Each of our accidents and events. James. See, we'll be learning to put more pieces in.
Uh, do you want to acknowledge any other members of your team?
We have Amy Thompson here. She's quite fantastic. Cole is not here, but he calls the whole arson. Yep. As together as well.
Nice. Thank you. Appreciate you coming to share this with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rod, what do you talk to us next about the Arbor Day Foundation and, uh, we should, the proclamation and go along with that to. To maintain our pre-city status, right?
Yeah. So specifically, what would you like me?
Whatever you put the tie on for.
Can I put it on the tie?
Working.
So each year we're. Staying. Winning. We've been a tree city. We're not a mayor, that's what I was going to use, a mayor, a tree city. Since then, we've done a number of different service projects and Arbor Day propositions. Everything from planting trees to tree tables. This year, we're going to try all of those. Mayor Jacobson and his wife, Larry, are.
This is my brother Darrell and my brother Darrell.
And his wife, Becky. She's giving her trees. It was the first, I think that's 98. And then on April 26th, there's going to be a tree planting. 10 to noon. Different sizes of trees and tree, right? And we're gonna. And at the end of this, I don't know, in this proclamation.
I, I, I think the council can read it or anyone else can read it in the packet. Um, you're doing a great job. Appreciate it. Nice.
I was. The day, maybe 25 on April 21.
Um, thank you, Rod. This is, this is something to be proud of in the city and council. You'll note that for some reason I get to sign this without your permission. So don't try to talk me out of it. Yeah, great. I'm, I'm, I'm curious, and I should, I should ask before I probably help with some of the planning on trees in Firefly Park. Are, are we doing some shade buffering or some light buffering from, uh, light in trespass? Is that kind of the plan or maybe Rod?
Yeah, I think that most of them.
Yeah.
Could start going to different sizes till we get.
Perfect.
For light screening.
Yeah. And you're the tree expert. Those are just going to take off and do wonderful, right?
Are they going to be irrigated?
No. So.
They won't take off.
There'll be some of the wet areas that someone will go. Supplemental water for a few years.
That'd be great. Thank you, Rod. Any, any questions for Rod or? Comments on the, the Arbor Day proclamation?
Well, thank you. It's very hard work in the city like that.
And. With that, uh, that gives us another chance to say thanks, uh, after you give us a presentation and update on, from the Parks Division.
Cool enough to just.
Okay.
I mean, he can talk.
Yeah, you don't have to wait for Levi. Just dive into it. It's up to you, Rod.
Well, I've got, gotta give you a slice.
Yeah, I know. It's like, I close to say.
Hey, this is the manager of the park division manager. I've been with the city for twenty years. Um, I have three great employees. Dixon Jensen, Charlie Nelson, and Steve Gales that work for me full time. We also paired a. Year-round seasonal, or year-round arctic employee for this, this last winter to help us out. Um, and then during the summer, we usually have between four and six. Seasonal employees that help us out. See. So we're going to talk a little bit about snowing on city sidewalks. There are twenty eight miles. It's clear each snowstorm. Over twenty of those are not city owned. That we maintain. Um, we used, this last year, we started using two different pieces of equipment. And that's kind of our time down from twelve hours for one piece of equipment to. Four to five hours for the two pieces of equipment. We. Use a Toro, which you can kind of see the picture out of the screen. Working on highway. This past spring, when it actually snowed this year. Um. And then we also have a side by side. To get some. Side. We also clear snow reeds well. City properties. We also clear the snow around this building. Heritage. Sportpark since it works, so we. Oh. Clear and of the three months, there's about half a mile we have to clear with shuttles and snow. Because then. Um. Kind of. Are you more than the three different crews? We have a mowing crew, which is another way of reading it. Throughout the summer, he takes roughly a hundred and ten acres. Of arches and open space. Some forty six different locations and twenty three of those locations are. Stormwater. Um, just for reference, and there's also about ninety acres that is undeveloped. When I started twenty years ago, we took care of. Ten acres. And we had a twelve acres undeveloped land and it took one person about six hours only. Um. So Braxton kind of has. Group up in the, we have crews. There's a mowing crew. There's a trimming crew. There's a meeting. Each, each week, so there's just one set thing so they don't get. Bored and quit. Um, and our, our mowing, we just from, everything from twice a week on some properties to. Once or twice a year, depending on the property. And the maintenance part we have worked. See. We also do a sprinkler and fall clean. And as you can see, this. This more of the process using is what we got this, this last year. This made us more efficient as well as the trailer is, it is being dumped into.
In dumps that high?
Yes. It's scissors and dumps. Um, it's kind of, it's cut one person out in the fall. About thirty hours a week, just using that piece of equipment. Um, here's some of the different levels of maintenance. We've got a stormwater base that we do about twice a year. We've got the sidewalk and heritage and we also have an employee. We want to throw Joseph under the bus, getting sick, pulling down the lines and deciding to take a nap. Um, we also, like I said, we do fall cleanup and then quite often we'll find water snakes when we're doing some tree trimming. Our sprinkler crew. Led by Rodney. We have forty sites with sprinklers on them. Six of those are irrigation pumps and so. Eight, okay. The other thirty four. Are a quality. There's over three hundred and fifty sprinkler valves, over five thousand sprinklers. Um, cleaning sites. Twenty eight of those are battery powered. And so twelve are AC and I'll kind of come back to that and it'll, it'll get somewhat important to that. Some of the issues we find and things we want to look for are. So we, we take pictures when they're putting systems in, so we have future reference of what's there and it's located. We do inspections before we take them. As you can see in the middle top, there's a sprinkler leak in the nerd box. Yeah, fixed before, except that we found leakage of the fluxes. Um, the middle picture. With the grounds, there's a sprinkler that's either been kicked up. Or. Which is the picture of us. Placing that flow. So, let's go back on this. We're starting to convert to web-based smart controllers. Um, we currently have three install, like two, it's came to be installed this spring. Um, one of the, one of the great benefits of that is with. The technology that's taking place, we're able to find. Controllers that, a radio control that go from a radio receiver to the controller. And. That will save us on the average. Each year about. Ten days of just doing seasonal adjust that we do throughout the year. So we're not just sitting. Watering ten years. The middle of July and that goes from when we turn them on in May through October. And then also when there's a rain event. It takes us between eight and ten hours each rainstorm to go turn those spots up and then go back to turn. But depending on the summer and kind of training again. That can get quite laborious. And then one of the other things that, that I'm working on is trying to. Be, I guess, definitions of what non-functional turf is and how we can start moving to stay. We're. Often. Sports that take place in the parks. As you can see. Sports that take place in the parks. Um, like I said before, so most of those sports fields get mowed twice a week. They get aerated two to three times a year. They're fertilized between three and four times a year. As opposed to just the other parks, they only use. They use about one fertilizer application a year. Um, when we prep for softball and baseball games, it takes between two and five minutes per game day. To do that. The paperball and tennis courts, we spend about a new week just maintaining, making sure that they're, they're long off and there's sticky stuff. Stuff on there. Um. Just for some roughly, so I got from Shannon. There are. Three soccer fields. Exist. I mean, there's about seven. Thirty games that take place. There are five ultimate. Brisky. Fields. There's about a hundred twenty five games there. There's five. Flag football fields that are in Italy. This doesn't count the other two in Ireland or Yalesville. But there's about seventy five games there. There's two baseball fields that we prep out and there's about thirty five games there. There's three tee ball fields that we paint at Heritage Park and there's about fifty games that take place there. The one softball field that we have, and then they also use Nively Elementary. There's about twenty eight games there. So that comes out to be roughly. Six hundred games at Heritage Park, a hundred and fifty games at Pelcorn, two hundred games. At Ander, a hundred games. Here at City Hall. So there's a little over a thousand games that are played. And if you were to have thirty participants at each of those games. There would be roughly thirty five thousand visitors to our parks going these days. Um.
I know.
To the coast. So our last group we broke up into is, is our buildings. And Steve Good is over those. We have six restroom sets, and so there's twelve restrooms that we clean pretty much every day throughout. April through October. There are five pavilions that we take care of. And. Each of those pavilions, well, our goal is to. A minimum of pressure washing those concrete surfaces and tables every other week. Um, there are some weeks where he's at two or three times a week because of the use and misuse. Just to have a clean for a user. He's spending roughly four to five hours daily maintaining restaurants and pavilions. Other things that Carter will be doing, he's also going to be doing that on Saturdays and Saturdays as well. So. Those weekend users will have a better experience. Um, I've seen everything from weddings. Company parties, family parties. Bible study groups and things that I won't mention, but like place of parks, as Aaron can probably attest to, with Crossroads. Um. We also take care of. Two observation towers. One, or both of them can be used quite often for exercise stations. We have a classroom. We also have. We're about this chance that we maintain some of those rooms empty daily, sometimes to us a day depending. Some of the things that we experience in the park, as you can see. Um, we get graffiti, people breaking. Water fountains. Showing. We think it was raspberries on the table. Someone decided to smash the. Root stream.
Does that happen very often?
It's. It goes in cycles. Um, the thing that's, we found the most is a lot of it takes place during the year. It's now after dark. So we, we think it's younger kids. That are doing a lot of it, just being mischievous. As you can see, the one picture in the bottom. Right corner. They emptied the garbage can. They smashed the paper towel dispenser and then took the whole brand new roll of toilet. Tried flushing the toilet. We had a group that last summer was covered in the wet evidence. They filled all this thing, drains full of paper and they filled the toilet full of paper. And then covered the floor with rain, turned the sink on, left it on. Um. Even, even little things like that at Heritage. It, it, a lot of kids, we says it's, it's becoming more and more each, each year. So it must be a group of aged kids that is growing older. Because as you can see, there's, they take playground bark and threw it all over that one boundary. And it takes them anywhere from twenty to thirty minutes each time that happens to clean it. None of it here on those areas, they'll take it in the restrooms. And fill the toilet's full and the sink's full. We have eight sites with playgrounds. And as you can see here, uh. We tried to shade cover with this one. There are five slides in this picture. So some of the things that we're trying to remedy that. Is we're planting shade trees around them and then also have new signs. And just to let you know that this next picture is a little bit graphic, so. An incident that happened this last summer in Nively City. At Heritage Park. This is a nineteen month old girl that was in a slide. And she ended up at the U of S and she burned. You can see the temperature of the slide. About an hour after the incident took place, at a hundred and sixty degrees.
And that's a plastic slide?
That's a plastic slide, yes. And so we have spacing just right and I heat it up, but the temperature outside was about ninety five degrees. So it just. Went super fast and the mom went to help the other kid that was on the swings and heard the one scream and ran back about. So, and then we also. Throughout the, the year, we do weekly inspections of the playgrounds. We find a lot of Sharpie graffiti. Of just little messages, some. More obscene than others, depending on the age group. And then we found, as you can see in the right corner. A broken section could be replaced down in Clear Creek. And then each year we bring it around to. To refill the fall protection. Um, doggies is becoming a bigger and bigger issue for my crew. We have eight dog waste stations throughout Nively Parks. This past year, we've been through thirteen thousand dog waste bags in our stations. Um, that's roughly forty bags a day throughout the year. Takes us about forty six hours a week just to maintain dog stations. That doesn't count all the dog bags that they put in the bag when it's a struggle. But I'm on purpose. Um, in the middle picture. You can see where the dogs have urinated all over the grass and skipped the grass as well as they. Their waste is on the sidewalk. Some of the projects were accomplished this last summer. Were the installation of the playground at the Mount Vista. Park. As well as the outdoor classroom. At. Firefly. Some of the, the special events that we helped with, they, so they go. Better. The week. Heritage Days, there's two food truck events, there's two movies at the parks. There's the play production along Heritage Days and then there's two fun rooms. That we're involved with. Um, this past year, we had a great year for. Volunteers, um, throughout the year, like I mentioned. Here in the center, the. Mount Vista neighborhood spanned a whole Saturday and. They tell me if I'm wrong, but there's probably seventy five hundred people there most of the day until Saturday. To assemble that. So you can do the math on the. If each of those people averaged two hours. Quite a few volunteer hours. Um, we had a group of girl scouts that came in the weekend after the playground was finished and put in a tree there by it. And then. In September, there was a national day of service sponsored by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and we had a number of projects. In the city, there was. Some at Heritage, a tree plant. Some at Heritage, a tree planting project at Heritage, Clear Creek and Mount Vista. As well as a service project in the market farm, and then a service project at Firefly Park. They are, they're one of what is really good. Um, you can see there was the group of volunteers there at Firefly Park. The the day that we were doing the actual day of service, there were still soccer games going on as well at Heritage Park. You can see in the background. And then I wanna go back to to Firefly Park a little bit. I'm very appreciative of all the volunteer hours that take place there, um. And most of that is can be thanked to Becky Yeager and all the the work that she coordinates there. Um, she sent me from some information just on. Been setting up the outdoor learning standard and the web page that they can sign for, and they have over four volunteer counters. Just in those two projects alone. There's also a weekly group that meets there through the growing season, that spends a couple hours each Wednesday. That helps weed the pollinator garden. There's also missionaries from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, and then there's been a couple of. Eagle projects as well as a couple of school classrooms. Some of the successes that we have, as you can see, as our current staff, I really appreciate their. Their expertise and their their desire to do the work and to serve. The residents of Nibley, two of them are residents of Nibley, and they understand the value of here. Appreciate the successes we have, uh, the way they want to be efficient, get the things done. That they do with the research they have. And also the successes we have is is returning. Um, seasonal employees, their desire to come with them. Some of the struggles we have is is keeping track of our assets. And how we can keep those at the best level. The highway and other city side maintenance, it's one of our shingles. As you can see, the other things there, getting everything done in a timely manner, hiring seasonal staff is just a constant thing. Each each spring, interviewing, getting people. Keeping you our users safe. As well as that vandalism takes place and then the dogs. Are there any questions?
Yeah, please, thank you, Rod. Go ahead, Aaron.
We talked in the fall, right before you closed the bathrooms, about battles and that happened right before you closed them for the season. We've mentioned the the idea of maybe getting uh security cameras, do you still think that'd be helpful? And if so, what would be the path forward?
Yeah, so as part of the budget process, we got a list of a few we're trying to pin down and nail down, decide what we wanna do. The real big hangup or question about whether or not we put security cameras in these locations is the communication network. We started with the SCADA to make sure the wells and the tanks can everything could talk to each other. And we just need to see what it will take to expand that wireless network so that we can start adding those things at the parks. Both for uh automatic locking doors as well as security cameras. And and kind of the same things we really have done in this building, we would like to start implementing those parks, but I don't have a dollar figure yet for what that will actually take. So we are working on it, hopefully should have that very soon.
There's any, you mentioned uh playgrounds that we have. Are there any playgrounds that you think of equipment's getting old that needs to be replaced, that we might start thinking about, in terms of budgeting?
The one very surprising. This about. Nineteen years old, and it's the highest used one that we have. Um, it's the one we put the most replacement parts on. And it averages about six thousand dollars a year in replacement parts. But that means said, one of those slides is four thousand dollars. And the last one, they the company actually warranty because it only lasted two years.
So do you think that's like we need to look at replacing the whole toy or just parts of toys or?
There there's gonna be a date when similar to that. I'm sure replacement parts. Because it's outdated, which is around the twenty five year.
And then maybe Justin might be able to help out this question too, in in terms of dogs, especially dogs in Firefly. I try to refrain from being a local enforcement vigilante, but to our animal control, do they normally just give warnings when they see people walking? In the park, or do they give tickets first time? Like, I think it seems too very effective yet.
That's a great question. We have had issues with trying to get that accomplished, uh, we have spoken times, they have. Deputy Mayor, so he typically worked through, and he have a specialized unit. He informed a few months ago, just to kind of try to target some of these real kind of issues, and he told me that this is on their list. And that they do want occasionally go down there and patrol that. That said, I do know they give a lot of things.
Every every day I work.
And I I talked to. A case of why. And basically, we do six. This is the science, there's no doubt to it.
Yeah, I have that to be.
And she just continues to do it. And she's been working.
Yes. Or to get tickets instead of warning, that would have to be.
What can you, just just to hear, used to the episode question, dude?
But my recommendation would be to. Firefly Estates Art Edition, just to. That there's no dogs and there's no blurred lines.
Yeah, and it's a it's a very popular park where people walk dogs around, and so I don't know if that's like on Nibley, do we need to look at? Do we provide a dog park somewhere else? Do we try and work with Logan to work, get a local dog park somewhere else nearby or?
So I don't think those two were the same. So that would.
Best trail in the city.
Just to fill in some background. It's forbidden to walk a dog with leash. And when you see ten dogs, are they under the leash?
People on and off.
And off the leash.
I usually only speak up when I see people with dogs off the leash, but.
And just background wise, discussions we've had. Encouraging nature at Firefly Nature Park is leaving the dog on leash or, you know, the concern is that that's a predatory. Sight that will discourage birds from testing and so on. I'm not sure exactly how to measure the impact of a dog on a leash in Firefly Park. Becky, do you know the answer to that? You're a wildlife biologist. Can we put you on the spot? I can't? Then you have, then you have to come up here and talk into the. There, so there, we have people, I I said earlier, we we have. One of the most popular YouTube channels in Cache Valley, and they wanna hear what you have to say, so you have to talk into the mic. Yeah. Yeah, and tell us who you are. Take with them that part, go ahead.
We do have that to work, we have catch goals, and then two via. Sandal trees, or just 100 pounds, if you want to let it. Kind of feel like dogs on a leash.
Oh, you're saying the dogs that were observed on the leash, yeah, so. So maybe we should. Right.
There's a lot of dogs. They're not, they're not.
And we need. Yeah, but that's a bigger issue. Do we need to?
Yeah, that's what I'm. Trying to get to, and and I'm not, I don't have a preconceived notion on that. We know that uh, Stow's Nature Center is building a Nibley classroom. Which won't won't go along with our master trail plan because the conservation movement on their property held by. DWR, Department of Wildlife Resources, won't allow a public trail on that property because of the dog threat. So, I don't know, I think we've gone far to do it. Ideas, but I'm not sure we have a solution. Uh, was it Nathan or Kate next?
What, Kate? I I was just gonna maybe suggest, uh. Those interested, maybe talking to Nate or not in the future.
Yeah.
So she. Hey, just wanna address that again.
And, you know, I'm I'm out of my area of expertise by informing your opinion, so. Maybe someone at the back of the room can help us find some re- resources to, uh. Where did you go? You're standing in my way. Help us find some, you know, some knowledgeable resources about about the data and what, you know, what's it mean? Okay, once you start. Right. So that's one thing for us to look at. Yeah, no, that's that's definitely a part of it. Thank you for letting me put you on the spot. Does anyone know where I could sleep tonight?
Yes, please.
Uh, we had your, um. What would we use? That's very long term. And we talked about the same thing, my baby, your baby and my dog.
Scam. Then, I'm gonna start with us. Either from Doug, to the exact same process that you did. It's for this, this is not allowed in hunger or. But city release, other jobs can it can be used on, so city mall here, public works. Some of our stoneholder basements, it can be used on.
Yeah, so just in that time, do you think that it's good worth it for us to do that conversion program?
Wrong numbers, it takes about, if we just offer water savings. It was about ten years, because we've got the largest experience here already. Some of our other sites would be able to faster return to some other segments. Um, from the information I'm getting, from colleagues through the state and and researchers, it's about the same maintenance cost. It's just a different maintenance cost.
Katie, do you have something to?
Basically the same thing you can set.
Okay. I'll be brief if if, go ahead.
Oh, Justin, just a quick point, we spent about forty thousand dollars on water to water.
So.
Before the next ten.
Cost, then it's more efficient and we want to save water, so, yeah.
So we can save water.
We we should be conservative.
Yeah, we should set the example.
Yeah, I think that may be.
So I wasn't gonna ask. Yeah, so do we, the the smart irrigation controls, are we using weather data? Is it easy, it is PT, evaporate transpiration based, so now it's.
Yeah, it's not on alfalfa.
Right, right, right.
Cause some of them are still on the alfalfa, PT, these are on under.
So that's all about the crop coefficient and all that stuff. So you're on top of it, I think that's fantastic. It's amazing how much, not only. How much water can you save if you turn your sprinklers off when it rains? That's what's easy to see, and that's what's to say, oh, what are they watering in the in the rain? But the irrigation demand, the loss from evaporate transpiration from the shoulders of the summer season. Can vary uh to the middle of the summer season by a factor of two. And maybe stop and think about. The hottest week in August, based on evaporate transpiration on turf grass, if you are watering it as much as it needed to not be water limited. Two inches of water per week, we get eighteen inches of precipitation per year, sixteen to eighteen. So conservation and efficient watering methods, I'm very happy to hear about evaporate transpiration driven irrigation schedules.
The state is giving up to fifteen hundred dollars per. Smart controller rebate, similar to what they do with residents, who has a hundred dollars, but first. For businesses and municipalities, they're doing to fifteen hundred per controller. There is one user in the state of Utah that's got over two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah. The battery operated irrigation control, by the way, you have batteries in the seventy five of, in the house.
There, there's a, there's a.
A battery pack. Oh, there's a clock right next to the, so it has a battery, obviously, to.
But it's only.
Without working out the batteries. Okay, now I've sufficiently heard it.
Justin. I should clarify that forty thousand dollars is. Like some of its water is secondary, shallow wells. So that's just the culinary beings, which is. So about a third of our parks we water with culinary water, two thirds with secondary, and that still costs us roughly forty thousand a year.
Well, I appreciate. Topic, but we get a lot of subdivisions and we want open space and we have those, are you still liking that idea or is that another topic? Case by case basis.
Thank you, thanks for your.
I appreciate the questions and discussion on vandalism, that's. Are are we, we worse off than other cities? Or we like other cities? Cause they, cause the bandits brag about what they're doing.
Yeah, a conversation we had very briefly. Two days ago, uh, and you made a statement about these small boys in Nibley really care. The the animals need to be at a younger age. And so I'm wondering, you opened the idea to a story of how we can get you people to be connected to Nibley. We have a new council. This is taking place.
I think it's the. Um, went to the fourteen year olds.
Where where we don't have quite connectivity options for people to say, this is my community. And so maybe thinking of ways that we can help encourage to their community might help change their view of. Who is being that.
Good job, Rod. How long have you been uh working?
Started on March third of two thousand and three. Two years. Thanks.
Thanks. How are you doing, Council? Should we dive into wait for water rates? Okay, let's do it, Justin. How are you doing, Council? Should we dive into wait for water rates? Okay, let's do it. Justin.
All right, thank you, Council, and thank you for all the citizens coming out. Hopefully, this is informative. I'm gonna try to, I know you guys have heard this a few times, so. I am gonna go through most of it again, but if I'm seeing you guys do it like this, I'll try to make this as brief as, but also as informative as possible, because we know how. Serious of an issue this is for us to make sure that we are using the public's funds. Bees and things that come to us to the most efficient and the most effective way possible. This is near and dear our hard, we try very hard and, and work very hard and very diligently to make sure that we take care of these, these sacred bonds. And so. Today, we're talking about the new city water rates, the history of the water rate, um, ninety-seven, you can see it was way back at seven dollars and fifty cents. And just skipping to the bottom of the pencil line, we really haven't seen much of the base rate, or excuse me, much of the water rate increase since two thousand five. Uh, the base rate back then was ten fifty and that's about ninety cents per thousand gallons in twenty twenty. So five years ago, the state came out and some of these conservation efforts that you guys have listened to and talked about, doing a tiered structure. And making people that use more water pay more for the upper tiers. And so we restructured the water rate, but we tried to do everything we could to not increase the water rate, so we. Included five thousand gallons in the first tier or that we, what we would consider the base rate, and we kind of changed things around. We did increase the, the, the usage just a little bit, but generally tried to. Design that rate and not increasing the cost to the citizens of nibbly. So we really haven't seen a increase in the water rate since about two thousand five, about twenty years ago. And in that twenty years, obviously, the dollar has changed. We can see record amounts of inflation over just the last few years, but for this, from this research that I was able to do, you can see on the bottom graph, there, a thousand dollars today, or excuse me, a thousand dollars back then, in two thousand five is worth about six hundred dollars today, so. Uh, a little more than half, but we've definitely seen the dollar inflation impacting the effect, effect. System. What's kind of slide is. City, as new people come in, more people paying the system. So even though our costs are going from, costs are going up, dollar values going down, we're able to make that up because we have more. So growth has really sustained the water system and keeping that water rate for the last twenty years. Today, we have about two thousand three hundred homes paying into the system. Back then, we only had sixty, so almost four times as much paying to, or many homes paying into the system as we did back then. Increasing costs, the, you can kind of break these into a couple of different categories. One is operational costs, it's a take to actually operate the system. And we're, you guys are familiar with, uh, the salaries. Salaries have really gone up over the last few years with cost of living adjustments. And pay for performance, the. Worth of work study, the compensation study that we were just able to do last, uh, a few months ago, to kind of reset, try to make sure that we're doing everything we can to be paying our very valuable employees. What they should be paying, setting that, comparing that to market trends, comparing that with other cities across the state of Utah, so. Idaho, making sure we have advantages completely set and that based on experience and training and things that our employees have, we can reset. Uh, salary position. So salaries is definitely one of the bigger issues that has caused some increase in the water system. The other was water meters, water meters are bread and butter. That's how we get a lot of funding through the usage of meter. Make sure people are using, there's some conservation issues behind that. So water meters are very important to us, and so they're, they're necessary, they're very expensive, and their costs have gone up. And Jared and I were having difficult conversations to understand that we'll have again, it's budget, we start talking about that water meter line, that water meter line is going way up. Um, most of that water meter line is covered by development, and that's a key component that I want to make sure everybody understands. So we go through this and I'll hit on it again and again. We've done everything we can to try to make sure that development is paying for. Impacts to development. We are trying to make sure that those costs are covered by them. And so as this water meter line, even though big. A lot of that is just new meters for new developments, and so they are paid for with a billing permit. So even though it's a big number, there's a bigger number, or the same number, there's revenue that comes into the system, but there's still a gap that needs to be covered as these meters. Run out of life. They're usually about twenty to twenty-five is what the market, salespeople will tell you. We're seeing closer to fifteen. And we're running up against that with the, with new cities started using these water meters and. Reusing our meters with the new technology to drive by. We are getting a bunch of new meters back then, we're seeing those start fail. So our, the, the gap between repair and replace of water meters is, is running. Every year to replace and to fix these meters. Does that make any sense? So that line is big in the budget, scary. Most of it's covered by development, some of it's covered by repair and replace that we need to make sure we take care of. So make sure, again, proper billing. We know we have the data to show we're conserving, not conserving, and where the water is going. So I mean, water meters have just gone up and up and up on cost. And they're becoming more like iPhones and where they're very proprietary, like you can't fix certain parts of them anymore. They used to come in three or four pieces, and you could replace one or two pieces that needed to be replaced, but they're kind of one unit now. So when they'll start to go out, it's a whole meter instead of. Parts and pieces. So water meters is one of those products that's gone up. Water testing and meeting the state and federal requirements continues to grow. All, all we're hearing about, hopefully. All the, if all the things we hear about happen, and that we're supposed to monitor and watch and. This is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. Lead and copper was the last big one. If you guys remember, we had to do a bunch of money towards inventory and copper, making sure we knew where any lead or any copper or, or lead lines, lead service lines, if you remember from Michigan and the mess that was a few years ago, the EPA and feds have really come down. Pushed a bunch of stuff. Well, now that, that was big and expensive. It's gonna continue to get big and expensive as that moves on, they're gonna start requiring replacement of those things, instead of just knowing where they are, we're gonna start mitigating some of those things. There's also on the very brink is what's called PFAS, it's. They call them forever chemicals. They're tiny, tiny particles of plastic that once they're created, they can never be destroyed. And they're, they're finding it everywhere, and so they're testing water now, and there's a lot of. Discussion and angst about what the feds are gonna come down with on PFAS, and so we're expecting to see that in the next few years. So these federal requirements continue to grow and grow, they're costing us more every year. Water share assessments, the canal companies are raising their assessments, and we have a lot of those shares. As development happens, we collect those shares and we convert those shares into drinking water, but we still have to pay for those shares. And so we have to pay these companies for all these shares that were used. So those costs have gone up quite a bit. The other one that you'll see in the budget, the water department is administrative transfers. What this is, is because of the size of nibbly, a lot of things are shared, uh, a lot of our accounting, the audit, the utility billing. Uh, a lot of our employees are shared across different and multiple departments. And so what we do, we try to split hairs from all those things and charge each of the. Enterprise funds, which are, enterprise funds are the water, the sewer and stormwater, they're technically supposed to act like they're a business. Revenue comes in and expenses are covered, and you try to not mix and match those funds that come in. But this is administrative transfers is a way to take money out of those funds and put it into the general fund, cover things like our utility billing specialist, Wendy that sits in the office that spends a lot of her time making sure that the utility bills are right, somebody. So, there are all those things you'll see that are kind of shared amongst the different departments of the cities, what we call the administrative transfers. It's pretty fast, I can show you a list. That continues to go up and up and up as, as costs increase with all, all sorts of things. Paying charges has actually surprisingly gone up quite a bit. Just their ability to charge credit cards, to make it convenient and easy for people to pay their utility bills is becoming a challenge and becoming more. So there's a lot of those things that are, are just increasing costs, costs, excuse me. Insurance, a lot of our insurance is based on our salaries, working comp insurance, it's based on what your salaries are, so every time we bump in, we work salaries, insurance. So we have, we've got that number for what else can be defeated this year, but we're just expecting that to be a bigger eating increase than we usually see because of the salary reset that we've done. So. There's just a lot of costs that have gone up and gone up that really tied to just operation costs that to run the city water system. This is a, a page out of budget, just highlight real quick all the numbers. You can see that, you know, beach line has gone up just since twenty eighteen, and within, you know, thirty-five to. You know, this water share is all the way up to sixty-seven. There is one bright spot with our power, our, our, our. Water operators, Jared being chief amongst them, is very concerned, very particular about how we run our wells, and very smart and intelligent about when we turn them on, when we turn them off, making sure that we're getting the best power rate. And we haven't raised that power, that line item in the budget. It's not gone quite some time, just because of their ability to work and manipulate and manage the, when the water wells are running, but we don't. See those expenses go. So that's a good start for the water. That's. See. As far as. I'm fast, I'm sorry, I'm like losing my breath, I'm slow, I'm talking to you. I have a psychologist. This is the administrative transfers, I know you don't need to read it all, but just, just trying to shave detail we try to get into, and try to break down all those costs, and make sure that we're doing everything we can to. Uh, distribute those costs equally amongst the different departments that need to charge for those. So we have operational costs in the system, but we also have capital needs. We have a need for growth and be able to handle the growth and, and manage those minority factors that we do can to try to make sure that development is paying for development. So if I could just may hit a couple of things on this slide, the, the big one that we have coming up is the new well. Plan to. Drill into it to provide more water, more source, it's kind of the technique that we would use, but that project rate is projected to be about five and a half. The vast majority of that project will be covered by development. There is some small percentage that will be covered, the break, and that's based on. State uses basically water we have, basically the use we have. Magic, your couch, very particular, very. Specific about what you, how much impact fees you can spend on that. Or you say we can see us with source, so that means that existing customers need to make up that small gap, and then the rest can be covered by impact fees. Not all the exact split, but I make sure the vast majority of that. Will be and should be. For development fees. The other areas that come with development are system reliance. As we grow and as we annex and we have new areas constructed in the city, oftentimes, we're able to go in and negotiate with these contractors to pay for it and upsizing the line, because as they come in with law laws and. Developing rules and laws, they're only, it requires so much of, they need, they need to pay for their development, but if they're the line, the sewer development that could serve other people and make our water system pressures and flows work. We can pay the difference between upsizing what they would need to pay for an eight inch line, we can move to a twelve for a fraction of the cost of what it would take us to go back in in twenty-five, ten, twenty, however long it would be needed and replace that line, or to sell another one. We're able to just cover that cost difference. And so we try really hard to watch that, we budget money for that every single year, just haven't had to spend a lot of that money, because we've been able to handle, do it through other means, and there hasn't been as big of a need. But with some of the annexations and the things we're talking about now, Tom, they're. Again, that's something that we try to make sure is covered. Charge developers for those things, because it is development that's needing, causing the system to continue to get bigger, bigger, bigger. So, uh, the other big one, this six forty railroad crossings, and when we get Mount Vista, we did some preparations with a line that runs west out of Mount Vista, would need to go underneath the railroad tracks to tie on to the big line we put in six forty. So it's a pretty small gap that needs to be filled, but it's expensive to go underneath that railroad. And so we have that plugged in, we keep putting it in, and then. Oh, we're not really at the point where we need it, need it, so we bump it back a couple of years into modeling the plan. So, you know, that is coming, and part of it is when we redid. Or excuse me, when we redid the asphalt on thirty-two hundred south and the roadway, we abandoned an eight inch line, a little eight inch line that's being thirty-two hundred south. So now, there used to be a twelve and an eight, now there's just a twelve. So we're east-west water movement is not quite as. Free flowing as north-south and nibbly, if you will, east and west has got some challenges and pickups, and we're fine, but eventually, as demand continues to grow and grow. That east-west movement of water becomes more and more critical, there will be a point where we need to make that connection. Uh, some of the other system improvements that are coming that are not really developed, but they're just existing issues and existing problems that are gonna cost us a bunch of money. None of them is the Yates Springs. Just today, Mayor and I were discussing with, this is the springs down on the hollow road that was contaminated back in twenty fifteen. We have not used that water in the drinking water since twenty fifteen. When that happened, state issued what was called, uh, a beauty island or. Which means to use that water, a whole bunch of super testing. And likely have to build a surface water treatment plant to be able to use that water. The water, we didn't. Wasn't worth the amount of water, so it was developed a treatment plant. And so this is by city, now recently we've done water replacement. And be able to use that water out of the windows instead of having to. So it's just kind of sitting out there. Where the spring discharges flows into their now input that. We're discussing whether that's. Our, take care of, everybody to take care of what we can do. Leave these like giant mess, if we could just. But any costs. Uh, we also, there's some future, pretty, you know, precise projects, we pay some divers or resident workers, we need out for quite some time, so. We would like to contract with some. Disinfect or sanitize, and actually we'll go with scuba gear and go clean out the tanks, take out all the sand and all the stuff that's been flushed in the tank over the years. They also do inspection for integrity. Do those kinds of things. That's something you do. So we have in the next few years, or down in the south as well, we have actually just pumped rainwater, system. We just count on what we did with the other water that we put in the system to make sure that we have the point two parts from the state bars. So we've talked about the. Here is. Excuse me, they raise their question, leaving valves, we have to use them, of course, they're very sophisticated. Actually, very sophisticated, simple in theory and inspiration, they're pretty difficult to dial in, make sure they, that they, they function properly. That need to be replaced. They're any ten to, ten to twenty thousand dollars to replace those valves. And kind of things, but the, the only, the only big thing, I believe, is to read the water master plan and really nail down our plan for the future. And obviously, we had a master plan. But in the last five, six years, new city staff has changed. We have some very confident, very professional people that have strong opinions. Help the water system and how the water system operate. So I would like to do a very comprehensive water management plan, kind of jokingly, sort of jokingly, tell these guys that we're gonna do this plan, and they're gonna seal it in blood, the thumbprint. Because once we get this plan in place, it's no more discussing about talking about what you do, it's go time. We got the next five, six years planned out, and starting four projects, instead of talking about what's. That's a pretty big expense to do a solid, good master plan, probably in a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars to really. So that's a big expense that's coming. And the, the beauty of dropping the money on that, to spend that amount of money is because at that point, we're able to redo capital or impact fees. And go through all those steps and checks and boxes and all those things to make sure. If you can, to make sure that development is paying for development impacts. So, anyway, there's this, the big things covered by development, there's a good chunk of that stuff that's on the, to develop and take care of. So, what we do is, we throw. Do this spreadsheet. This is a, we financial model, this was originally constructed for us by Science Public Finance back in twenty eighteen, I believe. Since twenty eighteen, I've just been watching this to see where we're coming in and how we wind up, and going to some, a projection of where. Had the growth we had with the projects we needed, and really just tries to forecast where you're gonna be and, and. It gets really boring when we start talking about needing to pay for a loan. And the banks and the Division of Drinking Water looks at this model to make sure that you are financially stable, and that you can, they provide you with a loan, you have the ability to pay it back, you have the ability to operate your system. And so we really. Try to fine tune this thing. tried to fine tune this thing. Looked at all of our expenses, looked at all of our income. We looked at uh, the roof, we looked at need to hire employees. We took a guess on how many so this is this wall, but as we do those things and we try to put all those projections together, apparently we did hard to do a little bit of a water rate adjustment. So we've done that, you know, there's a couple of little ways to do that. The water rate is broken into two components, the base fee, but also the usage fee, which we kind of hit on a little bit. I hope everyone understands the difference between those two and impact fees. So how do we, which one these raised? You know, the answer is yes. We all we looked at the base rate to begin with. The base rate is something that everybody, it's sort of the New York City water system has to pay every month when they drink a cup of water. What do they do? They have to pay this base rate. And with this base rate that are giving five thousand gallons with the base rate, when you get over five thousand you start using charges, talk about those in just a second. But with the base rate, in just for standards, try to get your base rate up into the fifty to sixty percent of your operational expenses. So fifteen, fifty dollar base rate, seven, about forty eight percent. And so staff would recommend trying to pump that up to get it to more the fifty five, sixty percent of our oper- operational expenses. And so we looked at how we said, how fast we increased it. Pretty much in so-called two dollars a month base rate for wood itch, base rates, which is kind of our red and butter, vast majority base rates are wood itch. Every base is base rate, every town has a base rate. I mean, there's others. So that was really So we also need to, you know, try and move that up and to two dollars a day, next fiscal year, and then a door. Every year there are people who put us topics out in twenty two fifty, put us, I think it's fifty eight percent of our costs, operational costs, put this dollar a year, so it's an increase. So this year it'll be seventeen fifty, next year eighteen fifty, next year it'll be nineteen fifty, next year twenty fifty. We also looked at the usage fee because usage fees can be a very productive tool and 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 for our encouraging conservation. The whole idea is that the more the longer you use, as you move up these tiers, you pay for that same block of water. So zero five thousand gallons, again, that comes to your basement. Five thousand to forty thousand dollars. It's currently you pay about a dollar five all the way up to, would you get over a hundred thousand gallons, you pay a dollar thirty five per thousand gallons that you use. And so we looked at that and started with kind of how aggressive do we want to be about pretty much impact the most, because if you're low users on we need this this lower increase in the usage. The calculations show about a ten percent increase to people who don't use a lot of water. So we went all the way to high, we bounced around, we came in and staff really focused, kind of came in on this level of submissive, if you will, on changing the base rates. Because it was fairly deep to low users, high users. And the the bottom line is there's just, there's just not that many high users. There's some high users, but I mean, you think about the schools, the church, USU, a few businesses. Uh, and so, you know, really impacting them and uh, may upsetting them and making them mad didn't seem like financially the smartest thing to do for the system. So staff recommended medium rest of this on the tier structure. And in actual media readings from a couple of years ago, it wasn't, it wasn't last year, but maybe the year before, you can see that the average water bill over the year thirty nine dollars with the new structure put in place that bolted up to forty four dollars or five dollars per month. You gotta shut out and process double here. So everybody tracking that makes sense there? So just a couple of tips. You know, just food for thought as we're talking about this. One of the things that the Division of the grants they look at and compare it is we expect it's requested money for the meeting adjusted gross income value, what that is compared to the partly walking in. So s- s- somebody in there wants to basically listen to the rain it. They their water bill needs to be about two percent of their meeting judgment. So Nibbly's meeting adjusted gross income is seventy six thousand dollars, but we would need to almost triple our water rate for us to be considered a hard like need getting getting in. And a lot of the cities that come through are meeting that threshold. And we're just not anywhere. Exactly why historically, just good management, cheap water, low power. Not long transmission lines, just just blessed with the systems that honestly is not strictly expensive to operate. So you can see like we're just uh, we it's gonna be tough for us to go to the least division drinking water and honestly, most other agencies and get couldn't sign up anything besides yard of cities costing with this new rate being out, they can vary two hundred fifty up to four hundred bucks a year. Is what a average normal size lawn in the cities could cost you with this new rate. This is just a quick comparison of other base rates in Cat County. You can kind of look down that list and see that seventeen fifty load of those those base rates. Pirens pretty close, however secondary pay for the use of their secondary water system is basically charged by the size of the block. And you get as much water as you want. Exactly how the metering, so you know, people see the the sixty nine six in the base rate, we think they're cheap, but when you back through all that and so I imagine two years, sixty seven, these rates pretty fun as well, but by the time we get up to twenty two fifty in five years in line-ish. Of other places in Cat County. Usage rates are more difficult to tell us than North Coast is pretty small in their basis, but their usage rates are very very but honestly especially depending behind need and capital they're trying to push that off by is uh, enforcing or encouraging conservation by charging very large usage rates. I think they were the ones that, you know, six dollars and fifty cents down again. Top it. Top it up there. And then just for fun uh, other places around the state, you can see we're quite a bit cheaper than all of those things. All those places. And my favorite was Park City. If you want to compare us to Park City, the average resident of the city in the winter time would be paying bucks a month, better ninety bucks a month for the use of the water system. So to the discussion just a little bit, make sure everybody understands what I'm talking about there. With this rate, I have modeled to that water rate alone of three million dollars. And there's some places we can go look for that, but usually the cheapest is with the Division of Drinking. They have a what's called state revolving loan fund. They do some belong that they loan money and then they collect revenue from interest on the loans they have not asked as well as they receive a bunch of money from the state better than we. So just go to an entity that that moves out. That sit on water every four months, like they sit down and says, uh, these guys come to pitch their projects. So likely that'll be the cheapest solution, but what I'm asking, what staff is asking you guys tonight is so I failed, should have put some resolution that you would offer the staff to go apply for that three million dollars. And if we go apply, we will bring back the loan terms. And do all the final polishing and touching up and give you another opportunity to approve that before it actually takes effect. But I am looking forward to the resolution to authorize us to go apply for that, if that makes sense. The other thing I mentioned is that because of our meeting adjusted gross income so low, it is extremely difficult for us to go get free money. However, we have been successful on two occasions of getting two brands, one from the for four thousand dollars and another the D W excuse me, Division of Water Resources uh, for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So staff will make about securities grants. Just yesterday, we were having some discussion about that and federal government and spending. And so we had some questions and we're a little bit about the four hundred dollars. Because the Bureau of Recreation is federalized and whether that's going to jeopardize the seven fifty. So somehow we may have made a difficult decision moving forward out of the four hundred so that we don't lose out on seven fifty. I'm hoping on Representative Snyder, try to make sure those all line up and all that works out. But I did remove that hundred five million dollars from the model. And we will squeak by with still applying for the three million dollar loan, being able to uh, pay for the loan, pay for operations and collect the impact fees that we need to do to make sure that we're covering these costs. So that makes sense. We did there. And other than that, I appreciate your opportunity. I know this is a difficult thing for you guys to do. It's a difficult thing the way it impacts everybody's lives. We appreciate your consideration and we appreciate the attention that you've given to this and the direction you've given to staff as we've worked through this over the last few months. And appreciate so much your support and all that you do for us and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions before we actually get to a part of our agenda called a public hearing. I'll talk about that in a minute. This is a presentation to help council and help our citizens understand uh, these issues before we give citizens a chance to speak to the council on this topic. So any clarification from Justin? Okay, thank you, Justin. That gives some serious work. And so as mentioned, uh, we we will conduct a public hearing. This is a specific place uh, in our agenda and a specific place in our process where we invite the public to speak to us about how would you like us to raise your water rate? Oh. Is that what you said? Yeah, that's I I'll just boil it down to that. And of course, that's not what people want. Uh, but we are, we are here to listen to the public and give us your thoughts on water rates and what Justin's presented and loans that we have to go out to secure and so on. So um, there is a sign up sheet. You don't have to sign up on the sheet. I invite anyone who would like to come forward to the council and make their thoughts known. What are you all doing here? Well, some of you are getting paid, but I'm waiting for the shoe to fall. Okay. Uh, the public hearing is open. And seeing no citizens coming forward to address the council, I will close the public hearing. Thank you. And with that, we turn the discussion over to the council to consider the uh, resolution. In front of you regarding
motion to discuss?
Yes, thank you.
Motion to approve resolution twenty five eleven, increasing Nibbly City water motion presented as maybe
Okay. Thank you, Norm. Can you all work on some wordsmithing for us?
I might give it to you.
I'll let you have. Do you you want the the amendment to authorize an application of law, right? Are you okay with that?
Then just take you
Let's see, I probably will I'll tell you what, Norm, before I give a second. Could I talk to you into approval as is? And while they work on wordsmithing, we can do that as an amendment to the main motion. Is that your motion then, to approve twenty five eleven as presented? Is there a second? Okay, thank you very much. So let's talk about the main motion and we'll work on the amendment.
I would like you guys to a lot of probably reach out and want to know why it's going up. If it's going up because of all this growth, then why aren't they paying more? I appreciate Justin spending time to kind of explain uh, growth is is paying a lot of it, still has some to see that we're still cheaper, but it is.
I put in a newsletter article, I'm I'm just going to mention this briefly. This, the the point of this end of this newsletter article was to do two things. One, it was to show that we live in a desert. We actually live in a desert that is incredibly blessed with water. Ironically, we're blessed, we're blessed with water because we have some mountains surrounding our our arid uh, climate in the valley with snow that melts and it's percolated through the soil and comes down as runoff and we can uh, replenish aquifers and pump that water out of the ground and irrigate our grass and do all those other things we do with water. But if we turn, if if you were to collect all the water from an average sized roof in Nibbly City, three thousand square foot roof for six months from April through October of the irrigation season. So you get to set up some rain barrels and collect all the water in your gutters. Put that into rain barrels. And then apply that to your landscape for irrigation. Instead of paying Nibbly City, the usage rate that just the cheapest usage usage rate that Justin was just talking about. The desert we live in, and I'm going to say the value that we actually get from Nibbly City for water, the the reasonable price, you would save yourself two dollars and fifty two cents a month by collecting that water. We live in a dry landscape and not only that, we can replace that, what doesn't fall from the sky with a city service that's worth two dollars and fifty two, if it the equivalent amount of water from the roof is two dollars and fifty two cents a month. Now that's about two, that's about fifteen dollars a year. And you know, to demonstrate even though the water in Nibbly City is and compared to other cities reasonably priced. You said two hundred and forty to four hundred dollars a year that people spend on irrigating landscapes. Is that about right?
Two fifty to four hundred.
Yeah. So anyway. Um, we can't live without water. And we live in the dry place. Thank goodness for mountains and snow. What else? Go ahead, Garrett.
Have you factored any costs for me?
No, no, I know. No, I, that is the value of the water that you would collect in those rain barrels. So now, listen, I don't want to, I don't want to give the wrong impression. There are people in this town and I respect them very much, who are very conservative minded and they do collect rain in barrels off their roofs because they know it's the right thing to do. And I agree with that. That's a very uh, important, very valuable conservation approach. Uh, but it doesn't pencil out when you, when you you can't buy one barrel for fifteen dollars, yes. You you guys, Neil Ron Helstern, great guy, helped us get Firefly Park started and stuff. When the state first allowed people, because all the water that falls on the state of Utah is owned by the state of Utah. And they let us use it for beneficial reasons. When the state first allowed people to collect rainwater off their roofs for irrigation. Um, um, Ron did a great presentation on how to set up a rain collection system. Ron's very conservatively minded. Good, good. I'm glad we're like that. But I told him those numbers back then and he said, go home. Because he had a room full of people that were interested and good for them. They were interested in buying rain barrels.
Yeah, just questions. So with Justin, we, I mean, obviously, I mean, on Adams, like water and you're talking about they sell it or do you have an idea of a range of what interest rates are at this?
Great question. That's that rate will bounce depending on your medium adjusted gross income, but typically it's it's been at about two and three quarter. I expect it'll be a little more than that in the near future. So I'm I'm I think in my model, I put three percent. But that's what I'm expecting in the just shy of three to three and a half, hopefully. But that's a great question.
Yeah, no. The assist of our water system. It'd be more than possible for them to. Help us in that master water plant since they're already doing some of that feasibility thing.
Uh, potentially, we'll, we'll put out a RFP and they're more than welcome to apply for that RFP or to submit a, a proposal. And they may have a leg up on some of the stuff they've already done and we'll definitely factor that in and consider that for sure.
But the work that gets done on, that got done on the study to do the. Well intake is certainly available to anyone who would.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, that's our data. That's our, I mean, we own that, we pay for it. So, but you bring up a good point because when we started this, we were looking at potentially moving forward with a well and a reservoir. And it's just really not feasible right now to do both. And not just financially, but honestly, to get, you know, staff really nailed down where to put that, how to do it, and whether it's in the lower zone, whether it's in the upper zone. Really affects the cost. So that's why we really wanna nail that down and really look at those costs. Because truthfully, this, this rate, I, I said, I believe will get us by it for the next five years and take care of this project. But I'm, I'm a little nervous about the next project in roughly. I mean, we're, we're, if you ask the state, we're behind. They want it done yesterday. But realistically, we're probably five years out before we'll be able to collect enough and be able to move forward enough. But I am nervous about whether this rate will cover that next project.
Uh, Norm, can you or anyone else, this is a moment for you to come from any member of municipal business, so I'm glad. Can you zoom that out for?
Good question.
Oh.
So there's a potential set of words to try to accomplish, I think, what you were after. And it could be into building, kind of, uh, offer an amendment.
Yeah, I'd like to modify and my motion includes. Staff is authorized to apply for three thousand dollar loan purposes, structuring. Oh, big night.
We have to give my position on the three.
Just two, three million instead of.
Okay, so I have a motion to amend. And a second from Garrett. Thank you. The motion is as. Uh, as shown on the screen. Thanks for real time wordsmithing.
Yeah, if I could. Point out one thing. Yes.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, this, the, the resolution shows this started being effective May first. That's completely up to you guys. If, if you wanna change that date. It's, I mean, it's fine. You're, you can, you can do what you want. You can start that when you want. It's not gonna make an incredible difference. It would be nice. To go to the state and say, you know, this is the adopted rate and this is why with the financial model, but. Uh, it's up to you guys.
Okay, thank you. Let's uh, let's deal with the motion of the, the motion to amend that, that has been offered. Think about some other. Nathan.
Is uh, is the. Statement of authorizing the city staff.
The attorney recommended. I, I talked with Eric Johnson. Our s- we, you know, we mostly deal with Joel, but in his practice is Eric. Eric is really a financial bonding expert. That's his. Game and he recommended get a resolution of approving this. Application and then go get all the terms. We'll bring those terms back. We will have a public hearing. On accepting those terms and give you the opportunity to accept or reject those terms.
I'm getting, I'm getting the feeling that you'd be willing to vote on this motion to amend. Is there an objection of, of doing that, saying not? Let's take a vote out of the amendment. Those in favor of amendment as proposed, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so now we have an amended motion to put the council.
Like to add an amendment of my own, if I could. Case. Uh, it's just in the number two. Reads a little confusing. Uh, I think clarity would be, we said. The monthly base rate shall increase by one dollar each year for the next five years. As currently written, my son, my kid, it's every month.
That, that I know that yeah, because I was confused with that. So suggestion is just the monthly base rate shall increase by one dollar each year.
Norm, did you second that?
Yes.
This was hard. I liked the more aggressive rate, but I appreciate staff's explanation of. Where we're, where we're at. I think that's good. Um. We'll point out in five years from now, we'll still be lower than most. In this county and we'll be like fifty percent higher than those outside of the county. So. Although it's kinda neat. Those, that feels good. I still think really doing a good job of balancing what we need and not charging more than. Right, the increase is delta, so that delta, delta year each year. And it, it, it's in, that's consistent with the table. Other thoughts? Where I get feeling already voted on this. Any other thoughts on the amendment? Saying then, uh, if you're opposed to voting in the amendment, let me know. I see no objection. Let's vote on the amendment. Is it clearly up there? Can you see it? Yeah. It said the next five years.
Go ahead.
This is.
For the next.
For uh, the next five years.
Yeah. Okay. With that clarification, I'm gonna ask General Counsel to make that the motion to amend, saying no objection. Let's go ahead, Laura. The amendment goes in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Another, we have another amendment on. It's too bad. I mean, we're getting hit with the increase just right in this day.
But go.
Yeah, I mean, library fees and. Law enforcement fees and. Water rate fees and. I'm gonna make a long list.
Warm water's coming.
And you know, these are, these are things that we have cities in the first place. We provide services to people that can't provide easily for themselves. Costs money and when. Gas go up and all that. Does anyone have anything else to say? Is there an objection for voting on resolution, amended resolution twenty five dash eleven? Saying none. Cheryl, will you call the roll for us, please? In favor? In favor?
Councilmember, please. In favor? In favor?
In favor?
Thank you.
Got that. Five in favor and none opposed. Motion passes. Justin, thanks for all your work on that. Tom, I know you were a big part of that too and. Keep the, keep the water coming. Thanks. I have a feeling we could get through the higher, I just a feeling we can get through the, the Hiram library fee increase. There's a fee I left off a second ago. Uh, before we take a short break, but I'm wanting to take a short break whenever it's down to it, so implied. Okay, let's do it. Uh, so next we have uh, resolution twenty five twelve, putting you contract with Hiram City for library services. Uh, we've talked about this before. This is the second time. This is our second reading. And. I don't, let's see. Does anyone have a, I'm gonna catch up. Is there a presentation on this? And I don't think there's a whole bunch of new information. Nathan, you asked about the original contract. I think that's been provided. Uh, are there? Are there any other? Things staff wanted to add? Yeah.
My, yeah, my only. Comment was like in the box, I messed up the first cell and the increase is closer to fifty percent on third floor. I noticed that to see if they're doing, I'm not very happy with myself, but nothing.
Okay. It's up to you, counsel. Norm gave a motion.
Yeah. I motion to approve resolution.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Kate. The motion and second is to approve the contract, Hiram City. Discussion, Nathan, please. Thank you.
Uh. Just a couple of questions, mostly for staff, I think. So thank you for the. Original agreements. I understand that basically an annual contract. Chair, I just said. Which is another exploration there that I saw.
Um, if we wanted that, we'd have to, yeah. Written notes with the time.
Six months according to the new contract. It used to be thirty days, now it's six months.
Yeah, so. Really is, if we do not agree to this, we would then immediately give them thirty days and this on the new contract, as we say. Um. Does Hiram have an out of service rate?
Seventy five dollars.
Non-resident library rate seventy five per year, per household.
And we currently pay that in the general fund. And the. When the source of income for the general fund is.
Tax and sales tax.
Sales tax and property tax and put it in order, right?
Sales tax.
Uh, and sixty, or sixty thousand of this is.
Dinner fund, income to million dollars a year.
Agreed.
Yes, it is weird cause like water rate that we just increased is like. Miniscule percentage wise. I mean, it raised the percentage increase is small compared to the amount in context that is the, is. Yeah, I had, I had concerns at first, but I think if it was residents, they're still getting a deal. It's still possible we should. And there, it sounds like they're not willing to kind of adjust. The, getting their households, so. I think. Clarification of the questions asked tonight, I'm. I have less hesitation, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you go, if, if counsel will indulge me, I'll spend a couple of sentences. The, the biggest change to this contract is we have been. Nibley City has been paying a. Usage fee to library, to, to Hiram's library per household, based on the number of households that actually use the library. And. H- Hiram is now saying, well. Just charge every household in Nibley by a certain amount. It's a smaller amount than the amount that, that we were being charged per household for those that are using it. When it's all said and done, it's about a fifty percent increase in library fees.
Yeah, year one.
In year one, and then it goes up by.
Seven percent.
Seven percent each year.
Right.
And we've talked about alternatives and. Made Hiram mad. I mean, not mad, but just poked at different things. I, we didn't mean to make them mad. I know they've listened to our council meetings, which I very much appreciate. We, we're very much appreci- uh, uh. We love having a great neighbor like Hiram and we appreciate the service that they're extending to us. We just hoping around at what it costs to do stuff.
Um, in the.
Sorry.
It talks about. Um, that someone will be appointed onto the board, the higher, the library board, which is to clarify, the library board doesn't actually have any. West side of power or local one. It's an advisory board to the Hiram City Council.
But we, that's part of the new contract. Is that the Nibley City government. Choose governments which choose are representative to the advisory board. Of the library.
Was before they just did.
Yeah, they, they paid someone who'd wait to the library a lot. It's good to have someone who's interested in the library.
I believe it's in there.
I think it's just one from Nibley, one from Wellsville and our staff and a city council member. Yeah. I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
Is, they'll be picked by the mayor and city councils, I think.
Yeah.
I think. This school year would be a good time to do that instead of the first of the year.
It looks like they have four. City representatives, one Nibley, one Wellsville, city council representative. Hiram's been a good neighbor to do a lot. They share the cost of the court system, fire and other ones, so. We're actually still paying the, the nurses. So I think if this passes, if we can do something like our website to give a link that people know that they um. Have access to library link, the QR code link and. I know they have a lot of online and when they came and talked, they could increase the online books available to those that don't visit person. They still. Use that and take advantage of what.
I think a little bit sarcastically, when Hiram came to help us talk about this, a little bit sarcastically, we said, well, we're gonna take out a big. Public service campaign and flood your library with Nibley residents since everyone's paid. I said, great. So we should. Maybe just take a, take a, a note that we, we should do some polling service with house and.
Got it.
Okay, thank you, Nathan.
Yes, since this comes out of general facility. It's a bill. Be. It's specific to library setting here to people. Hit us. Not saying we should do that, but.
We talked about that alternative though.
Okay. Any other comments? I get feeling you're ready to vote. Is there an objection to voting? Saying none, uh, the motion in front of you is to approve resolution twenty five twelve, approving the contract with Hiram City for library services as presented. Carol, will you call the roll, please?
In favor? In favor?
In favor, councilmember.
Five in favor, uh, none opposed, motion passes. Resolution stands. Again, our thanks to Hiram for being such a great partner and such a great neighbor. Very much appreciated. Let's. They'll go to the library together. All right, I'm gonna see if there's some objections taking a five minute break before we get into the next batch of. The ten items that are sort of related. No objection? Thank you, Valentine. Uh. How does the time fly?
Fifty one.
Let's call eight fifty, four minute break, eight fifty. Two minutes late. Note it. Okay, we'll come back to order. To pick up on fourteen, this is a discussion in consideration of order twenty-five twelve. This is a rezon application. In the vicinity of twenty-six hundred south. From residential R two to commercial, and this is the first time we've, uh, considered this. Levi, you gonna do it for us?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, let me. I think I saw that Al was online for.
Alright.
Are you also thinking?
I am.
Okay, we'll give you a chance. Will that Levi do the introduction? And then, you know, we'll, we'll give you a chance to, I know you and I'm trying to remember your name with the county finance.
West.
Westing, okay. And, and somehow I'm gonna need help from staff. Maybe watching for a raised hand from Al or something to. Uh, know that Al wants to speak. Remotely.
Yeah.
Do that.
Um.
Wait, so you okay?
And if I, and if I don't. Uh. The, Al, you can just chime in. We should, we should be able to hear you. All right, uh, yeah, so I'll, I'll give a quick introduction to this, uh, item. Uh, so the, the applicant is. Uh, requesting to rezone this property at, at fifteen hundred west, twenty-six hundred south. From its current zone, uh, designation of residential R two to commercial. It's a, about a seven point eight acre parcel, and just for orientation, that's, uh, it's, it's on the s- s- southeast corner of twenty-six hundred south and highway nine. Ninety-one, just north of Tri-H Farms there. So, as, as part of the application, there's, there's a number of questions we, we ask the applicant. Uh. What is the need for the proposed zone change? It's for, the commercial developer wants this property for development. Um, what the public benefit is, is for commercial opportunities. They've, they've indicated that it complies with goals of the. General plan, uh, why, why the anticipated use is appropriate for the se- surrounding area. It's next to highway eighty-nine ninety-one, and then they've indicated that there's, there's sufficient infrastructure for. Uh, to support development for that type of zone. Uh, when it comes to staff's recommendation and, and I, I'll get into the planning commission recommendation as well. We. Uh, primarily use the general plan as, as a guiding document, as a guidepost for, for zoning decisions. Uh, uh, the future land use map designates this area as commercial and medium to high density residential. Uh, some of the goals that are, that relate to this, land use goal one. Uh, I, I won't read all of these word for word, but really speaks to. It, it speaks to encouraging different types of development and balancing, uh, different types of, um, being, being thoughtful. With regards to commercial, residential, light industrial uses. Uh, land use goal two, it really just speaks to using the future land use map as, as guidance for. For zoning decisions. And then, commercial, uh, and economic development goal two is create and maintain a sustainable economic base for Nibley City. They'll provide tax revenues and increase local employment. And convenience of shopping. And back, and then going down to principle two A, which is under that goal to improve, diversify, and increase Nibley's tax base, seek revenue growth from economic development activities to mitigate. Re- residential property tax increases that may be required to offset increased level of service costs. So, commer- commercial development, you know, in particular, when there's, uh. When they are generating sales tax. Uh. Not only do we get the property tax benefit, but also the sales tax benefit of, of, of that development. So, so there is. Uh. A greater fiscal impact generally with, with commercial development. Um, compared to residential. So, planning, both planning commissions and staff's recommendation is to approve this rezon. Uh, with, with the following findings that the proposed commercial zone designation is compatible with, with the commercial and medium to high density residential designation of the future land use map. And the reason would support commercial economic development goal two to create and maintain a sustainable economic base for Nibley City. They'll provide tax revenues and increase local employment and convenience of shopping. And the, there was a public hearing held, uh, with, with planning commission. Um, as, you know, as required by, by state law. And, uh. The, for, for this particular item, uh, other than comments from the applicant, there weren't, there weren't additional comments made.
Okay, thank you, Levi. Wes or Al, would you like to add anything to that before we give it to the council? I, I don't think so.
Um.
Al, I want to speak so we know we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I apologize, everyone. I think Joel gave me this cold. So. Uh, I apologize because I'd rather be there in person, just kind of walk this thing through. Soon.
We appreciate you not bringing it to Nibley.
I don't get sick, but someone gave it to me yesterday, kind of them, but. The two parts on this, and I give a little bit more update in here. Is, we are, um. We're still trying to work. Um. With the grocer, they're still trying to put the plot map, and, and the thing that, um. The commercial developers, both Stuart and Bill, said is. I'd like to see this just get started and then give them some time. To, to, they need to, you know, a few weeks to kind of finalize some things before everything, and so. They, they asked, we go ahead and, you know, go through the first reading, which, which I agree with, and then. Then we get some more direction from them as they go forward. Um. And, and they have some challenges in there that they're trying to work through and get things done, and so. So, that's, that's the status where everything's at right now.
Okay, thanks, Al, and so. Again, for folks that aren't here every night, um, we often do two readings. The first. The goal of the first reading is to make sure we understand proposal. If there are questions about what the proposal means or additional research to do, uh, then the council can ask staff to, can, to, to do that. Um, in addition, the council has. The authority to waive the second reading and adopt it. The first time it gets our agenda, as you. Okay, a notion from Norman, thank you.
Yeah, I'm motion to approve orders twenty-five twelve as presented for first reading.
Hey, there's a motion and a second from Garrett. That motion and second is approval of twenty-five twelve for first reading. On this rezon from residential. To R two, half acre lots to commercial. Discussion, please. Nathan.
Yeah, I got it, no. Problems is great. Plan. My problem is move with our current use charts. And the things that are permitted and not permitted, and conditional. Specifically, car washes and gasoline stations are not conditional. Some others that I think maybe we would rather see are. Less easy to acquire. And. So I know that the application to admit, I know that we probably are not allowed to change before a second reading, or it would just be based upon what the ordinance was at this time.
Right, and, and any changes to the land use chart would have to go through planning commission.
Howard. Out entitled by the land use chart when they receive a rezon. They receive standing according to the land use chart. I just asked Levi this question. Tell me if I get it right. They receive standing on a project proposal. According to the land use chart. So. Sorry, what? You read my mind? Where was I? Oh.
Yeah.
Does that answer the question that we were going to ask? Okay. And Wes and Al, you understand that? Am I clear?
Yeah, I, yeah. Maybe, maybe I can add a little bit if I, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um. And I know this goes into the second part, so. Um, Stuart Thane, I emailed this over just now to, to everyone there. And it talks a little bit about both. Lots, but from Stuart Thane and from Bill. And Stuart says. Al, after reviewing the existing plans for the north side twenty-six hundred south, I believe that you need to zone the triangle PCs of Heritage Drive to residential. The layout efficiencies on that parcel are tough, and you only get one solid pad, and the others would end up going to non-retail type uses. The existing retail that we have been working on. And the seven acres on the south side of twenty-six hundred south is where we need to put the retail pad users to do, due to. I feel this is going to be the main retail intersection for retail in this trade areas, hence, we've been working on it for such a long time. Any questions, let me know. That came from Stuart. From Bill. He writes, and again, I sent this email over to you just now, regarding the rezon meeting night, I would like to. Think that the proposed rezon allowing for townhomes to be built east of Heritage Drive and commercial south of twenty-six hundred south would be desired regardless. The property south of twenty-six hundred south is better as commercial and developing the land along with the shopping center provides the best route for stormwater. So, that's. That's what they've been working on. And putting the whole two together. So, anyway, just a little bit, that they're looking at having the retail pads on that, on this parcel here. Um. And would be much more suited, be able to. To have retail outlets. Such as. The fast food or something like that is what, what I have heard. So, anyway.
Okay, so I, I just give a clarify, Al, I might have to. Ask you to come back to some of those statements because we're, we're actually considering. Two different proposals tonight. The one that's in front of us tonight is to rezon the piece of property that Levi showed us, south of twenty-six hundred south.
Correct.
And then at, uh. Soon on the agenda after this one, then we'll talk about other rezones.
Right.
In the area. Right now, council's clear, talking about. R two to commercial on that triangle piece below twenty-six hundred south.
Correct, and, and just a point in there is, I mean, they, they wrote their information together, they combined it, and so I wasn't gonna sit there and try to separate out their statements, so. So, anyway.
Nathan, uh, any reason, Norman, tonight, just go to second, responsible time, follow procedure. Take it one at a time. Uh, this is our last, is first hearing. Okay, it's a good place to do it if it doesn't sell and his taxes and go up. Hopefully, hopefully you'll get. Eventually it's gonna go commercial at the land use. It's just. Yes, sir, keep your time in. Awesome, thanks.
Ready to vote? Are there things you would like staff to research? Uh, if more information you'd like before we have a second reading? Uh, like Norm said, I. I'm, I'm, I'm seeing that. First reading instead of waiving second reading is because Al asked for it. Okay, that's correct. Any opposition voting? First reading, we'll just do a voice vote, pose in favor of. Uh, resolution twenty-five twelve on the rezon for first reading, please say aye. Are you opposed? Okay. We'll bring that back to a final. Uh, next, one, I have fourteen, this is another rezon application in the area. This, uh, or, uh, oh, sorry, this is our RM, so the, because RM is very special. Uh, uh, in terms of that zone, there's a couple of steps we have to go through. First step for us to look at is to. Modify what parts of town, um. Multi-use residential RM. Mixed residential would be allowed. So that's what we're gonna think about first. Okay, thanks, Levi. Thanks.
Yeah, and the background information that I provide in, in this presentation really applies to both, uh, both of those items. They, uh, they're really interconnected, so I'm not gonna rehash everything twice, uh, oh. I'll just provide the. The background of both, but the applicant has, uh. They, they did, they submitted a rezon application from commercial to mixed residential. For a five point two acre portion of, of parcel zero-three-two-two-seven. Uh, zero-zero-zero-two, and I, I should note that just recently, uh, uh, there was a lot line adjustment on this, uh. So, so the images you see on the screen and, and the lot lines that are shown are, are a little different now. They actually align. Uh, more with, uh, what, what the applicant's proposing and hoping to get from this as far as, um. So, so they're, they're a little different, but the, the area. So so they're they're a little different, but the the area, the area is the same, so we don't really need to get into that too much, but just just for if if there's some confusion there with with the parcel numbers, I'll I'll orient you with with the area that we're talking about on on the next slide. Uh, so yeah, the re- the reason that this item is in front of you is the RM zone only allows a specific very specific areas to be rezoned to RM. And so in order to get that rezone, uh, this this uh consideration for for adding this area to the map is needed. Uh, the applicant uh, the 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 concept plan, the applicant has provided a concept plan that that reflects a portion of an existing preliminary plot application that is uh currently under review, staff, staff is has reviewed it, we're currently on the, you know, the third review of this. Uh, but but it can't move forward, at least as as proposed, until and unless this this rezone were to be approved. The the property was recently rezoned from R two to commercial on June eighth of twenty twenty three. And it also includes a portion of an area that was uh last last year approved uh by by planning commission, well, I and I believe city council as well, through planning commission city council for Nibley Marketplace Concept Plan. So again, back to the applicant statement, the the need of the pro-zone change, changed residential to join the re- the residential RM zone to the east. Uh, the public benefit is to create more first time homebuyer housing opportunities. This complies with the goals and of the general plan, again, pointing to housing opportunities. Like, please explain how anticipated use is appropriate for the surrounding areas, have RM zone to the east and a commercial to the west. And this question about public infrastructure and and if if it's sufficient for for the property and the applicant wrote Heritage Drive needs to be built for the commercial development, that needs to be coordinated with Nelson Farms, a commercial developer and and the city with a TIF in parentheses. These goals uh that are really the same of what as what I already talked about in the last item, because this this area is is in, you know, close proximity, uh, it's, this is just north of of the the area that that was on the last agenda item. And the future land use map, it it shows commercial and medium to high density residential. Some goals to think about is is balancing a mix of commercial residential housing and light industrial uses and carefully planned for for growth and and suitable locations. Uh, use the future land use map as as uh to to make these zoning decisions. And then commercial economic development goal to uh create and maintain sustainable economic base for Nibley City will provide tax revenues and increase local employment, convenience of shopping. And I I should have put it on the screen and another goal I did include it in in the packet, there there is a goal in our modern income housing plan to consider additional areas for for the RM zone. Um, so that 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 would that would be in support of our moderate income housing plan. So looking at the some of the considerations here, going to talk a little bit about staff's now announces, so you you can justify that both the existing zoning of mixed residential, I I put R two, but that that's a type of mixed residential. And uh and commercial are consistent with the future land use map. Uh, the general plan encourages mix of uses, and at this point, there's very limited commercial uses in Nibley. So additional commercial development would support commercial and economic development goals. So really, that this decision in front of you is 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 a balance, is a lot of decisions that you you make of uh trying to provide uh commercial opportunities in the city and the benefits that come with commercial, as well as, you know, housing opportunities. The, just to orient you a little more, the the red area, there is 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 what we're we're talking, it's approximately the area we're talking about. The proposed RM zoned area and then and then the uh tan is the current RM zoned area. Little more context in is you you can kind of see in the background, the proposed development. So this is really what the uh, what the developer is is proposing, if this were to be approved to to be located in that in that site is townhomes is as part of that that townhome development to the east. Uh, this is, this is the what was previously approved as a concept plan for Nibley Marketplace. You can you can see the commercial development that that was proposed there. Uh, and you know, it's understood that that plans change and and diff- there's there's different proposals that that are being uh discussed, you know, no- nothing's been presented to to the city yet, but but uh, one thing to keep in mind is at least at this point in time, a year ago, it it was um at least presented that this area was was viable for commercial development. Looks like I repeated that's that slide, so. What was that? Yeah, go ahead.
Just as a side note, uh, commercial zone does allow up to ten units per acre residential with the caveat that there's fifty percent of the area designated as commercial, so you not only get ten units per acre, that potential. But you also get um the uh residential, but I may be mistaken, that's not in the town center.
It's not the town center, yeah.
I just wasted my.
It's okay.
Sorry, Tom.
Listen to you next time.
There you go.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, yeah. That that is applicable, that is applicable in the town center area, but but not for this area.
This rezone at the town center.
So I I think it can be said that both the existing zoning, the commercial and the proposed zoning, uh, you you can definitely argue that both are consistent with the future land use map. The the general plan encourages the mix of commercial residential light industrial uses. The moderate income housing plan includes a strategy to consider areas to rezone for dense densities necessary to facilitate production of moderate income housing. Uh, however, there are limited areas in Nibley to support viable commercial and economic development, and that really is a gap in the city for uh creating a complete community as we as as we've kind of tried to push toward that, and so trying uh and you looking at the opportunities that twenty twenty six hundred south and the planned Heritage Drive could provide to support access for commercial development. Um, along with its proximity to to highway nine ninety one. Um, and then commercial development potential is is apparent with with the recently approved concept plan. Again, I understand market changes and there's there's different uh thing, factors, factors that go into play there, but but there 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 is apparently uh some development potential for commercial in that area. So both uh planning commission and staff's recommendation for this this item, item number thirteen was is to deny uh, the the ordinance to to change the the RM zone to allow for for this area as well as, you know, jumping forward to the next item, just just to kind of put my kind of bow on my presentation, it is to recommend denial of of the rezone itself. With the findings, really, the reason I I say those both at the same time is the findings are the same, and that's that's the existing commercial zone designation is compatible with commercial and medium to high density residential. Uh, the rezone may limit the potential to attain commercial and economic development goal two to create, maintain sustainable economic base for Nibley City, they'll provide tax revenues and increase local employment and convenience of shopping. The recently approved concept plan for commercial development on the property and its site context demonstrate a potential opportunity for commercial development that would be less likely if rezoned a mixed residential. Uh, next here from the planning commission as well, if if you want to ask about their, you know, the the planning commission's uh discussion, and we can we can get into more detail there. But, you know, these these types of themes and items were were discussed with planning commission.
Nick, do you want to make a statement or do you want to be available for questions?
I can be available.
Okay. Okay, thanks. We have the planning commission recommendation, appreciate that. Uh, Wes or Al, would you like to add to that presentation?
Well, I think, let me let me walk through a couple of things, because Levi brought this up, and so back there. The reason we we zoned it commercial to begin with was because the grocer wanted this store situated in a certain position. And then they they've come back since then, and they want it rotated differently, so that they have more visibility to twenty six hundred south. And so that's that's the issue in there is why you say, well, why did we zone it there? It's because on the first layout map, that was that was the purpose in there. But, you know, in the last council meeting, Mayor, you asked me, you said, you know, if if Bill and Stuart said, hey, look, this is not going to serve, you would support us in this, and this is their comment. The existing retail, the layout efficiencies on that parcel, and we're talking about this parcel here, are tough, and you only get one solid pad, and the others would end up going to non-retail type uses. So what Stuart has done here is he's gone out and he's checked with, he's got several entities that are ready to go on this thing. They're ready to go, but as they laid out the pad between him and the commercial developer, they realized that there wasn't that interest to go that far away from the highway, you know, and he makes the comment, he says, everyone wants to be right next to the highway. And he added further, he said, if we had to keep that commercial, it will sit there, because nothing will be done with it. And he said, he said, the only thing I could even see remotely even coming in there is some medical facility, but he says, we're not even around a hospital or any any other services. He says, so so why would someone even come that far away from anything else to do it? And he says, and so, you know, his point was the layout efficiencies on that parcel are tough, and you only get one solid pad. I mean, this is the state's top commercial developer, Stuart Thane. And I think his word has something here. And and so, you know, it for me, you know, whatever I want or anything like that, I think that is something there of value and say, okay, you've done this, you know, a hundred times, you know what you're talking about, the layout efficiency, they're tough, and if you can't sell them, we just sit there and do nothing with it because we can't do anything with it, and so that's the problem. And then he adds, existing retail is better on the south side of twenty six hundred south, so I go back to Bill. And what you asked me for, Mayor, was I think the proposed rezone allowing for townhomes to be built east of Heritage Drive and commercial south of twenty six hundred south would be desired regardless. He says, yes, this needs to die, because he says, we can't develop it, and I, to Levi's comment there, this, when they originally rolled out that that proposal back there about eighteen months ago, two years ago, this was going to be phase two, so phase one was going to be north. This is going to be phase two, and then phase three was going to be the southwest side. But they realized that they don't have the demand for that, that and, you know, to Stuart's point, you know, he says, if, you know, I can't sell anything, I can't get anything developed, I I don't have anyone there that will buy that. So if no one's going to buy it, it hamstrings us, and we can't do anything with it because we just sit there hoping that some golden night will come down the road and and maybe it will will go. But that could be eight, ten, twelve years down the road, and so my point here is, you got two people that really know about commercial development. And I think the reward needs to be honored and say, gosh, they're work, trying to work this deal out for the city. And we don't need this property here to be commercial, to make this successful. It's not going to help us, we can't buy it, Bill's not, they're not going to buy it. So what do we do with it? And so that's that's the thing is, is both Bill and Stuart, and you brought it up, Mayor, you said, as long as I got Bill, you would be an advocate for us. Bill said it, and Stuart said it, you know what? Let's put it into residential and let's make it work and be very productive, because then you got more households. So they can sell the 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 uh the different parcels on the commercial center. So there is really good demand for the parcels there. There is really good demand. But they to go from, you know, basically roughly sixteen, seventeen acres up to twenty five, twenty six acre, that's a lot. And so that was their point, so anyway, I'll shut up.
Yeah, I have, I have lots to say, but I'm going to hold off to find out if this is for first or second reading, to get into the heavy lifting. Wes, do you want to add anything to that?
Um, I would just say, if it comes to uh commercial development, having as a controller for five or six years, or a commercial developer, I mean, getting an anchor store is key to seeing any additional uh, commercial development occur around the property. Once you have an anchor store, then there's much more interest in in potential pad sites being developed, so.
Right now, this proposal is very clear.
Sure.
This proposal has nothing to do with the the main pad, this is in fact the area around the main pad that you just mentioned, and the opportunity for additional commercial development around the main pad, unless we uh rezone a residential. So. I, yeah, oh, that's, that's very, very, all right, I, thank you.
Hey, Mayor, this is Joel Nelson calling.
Go ahead, Joel.
Hi, um, I'm a I'm really want to emphasize that we're trying to be partners here. And we've engaged some very intelligent developers and and uh um, things, as we've discussed a number of times, have changed over the the many months we've been working on these things. And indeed, as it's been stated, things change. And this request fits within the uh approved uh uh designation, and and I just asked that uh there'd be a little consideration of what, trusting us, working with us, instead of just ignoring everything we seem to have to uh give opinions on about how we can develop this. Um, because there are so many parts that that are not seen that Al is dealing with in in the background, so that's that's just my comment.
Thank you, Joel. All right, Council, I'm going to turn this to you, and it will be very important, I believe, for our debate, go ahead, if you need.
Yeah.
To approve first reading. Hey, we have a motion to approve this modification to the RM map for first reading. Second from, hey. Discussion. Garrett?
Yeah, I was going, I was waiting the bell, you're running just to change.
Just a few days ago, yeah.
In that. Trying to get together, there's not a few persons, it's just the words, there's two. Which stagecoach in this split zoning single parcel, just this, I don't know what I did, it's just round new.
Yeah, and I think, I think there may be a statement in the agenda item report that should have required you know, them to be all be on one parcel, but that's that's not really necessary at this point in time, um, because they've already, they've already done that, if you choose to approve this, but but, I mean, a lot line adjustment, they can move lot lines around however they please, as long as they meet, as as They can move lot lines around however they please, as long as they meet, as, as long as they meet our. Regulations on setbacks and zoning and those kind of things. So that, those, those can, those can shift around.
My parcel will go down. Never go through any sort. I agree with you. Take eight in there, you're a happy day, David. Nathan, yeah, so. I think that. Tom could allude to this, but this is just getting me back to. Why we didn't give you up, because it's proof that it might not be what we want. And we really don't have a high density zone. We don't. Um. And I think we need to, we either need to modify that RM or we need to get a better zone for what we would like to see in these areas like this. I have a question of, and this is why first reading is. Though this zone does not currently require a percentage of commercial or specific design. Commercial, um, would be all commercial with some semi-residential out right now. Not.
Non-commercial.
To. Be, well, we would see like a split. Where there's residential above. Off. But I'm gonna be current with them. It's hard to be a perfect area except, except the tax, not sixty five.
Yeah, we discussed that a lot, the planning commission discussed that a lot. I mean, there used to be murder laws with loud for residential applications allowing. Commercial would probably want to revisit what made us stay in those out.
So my question is to staff and attorneys and such. Can such a requirement that currently exists in the town zone. Similar be required in a development agreement which is required?
I mean, a, any of that can be folded into a development agreement.
But, but the RM's.
Correct.
Legislate. There's need to negotiate. RPVs, yes, but.
You're right. They, they do require a development agreement, but it, but it's, but it's not. A, unless the applicant requests that. The city can't really push the developer to. For example, add, add commercial, if we don't have a standard for it. The developer can request it if it's, if, and if it's something that isn't in line with our code. If we, if the council and the planning commission goes through the proper process, you can approve it that way. But. Well, our, RM does require a development agreement, but the planning commission is actually the approval authority for that. Not the city council, because the, the development agreement. And, and, and until you start putting, uh, provisions in there at the request of the applicant that aren't in line with the city code. Uh, there's really no reason for this, the city council to weigh in on it, because it's an administrative approval. Yeah.
Tom, go ahead.
So just for clarification. Are we saying that if it stays commercial, so it doesn't allow residential, but through a development agreement. That could be negotiated to allow residential in the commercial zone?
It, if, if the, I mean.
If the developer.
If the developer proposed it. But I, I, I mean, they haven't indicated that they're.
All of the steps, including planning, legislative decision by the council. To approve that development agreement that it would take to, to the equivalent of changing the ordinance. Right? So that would take it from a, 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 a. Administrative decision by the planning commission to a legislative decision by the council. You know, because you have to go through all that.
And maybe real quick, just to address your, your comment before. The RM zone actually does allow a mix of uses of, it doesn't require it though. So you can, they, they could, if they chose vertically. Mix, mix uses like, like you've, you've. But they're not indicating to do that, and we, we don't require that.
I think we've seen pictures of the. Proposed residential application. Someone, the proponent can tell us, you're planning to. Follow the. Proposed residential application you shown us, or are you gonna rezone it from commercial to go back and put commercial uses in there? Anyone can answer that that wants to. I said, I'm saying, I think you have made it clear you want townhomes.
So, and, and apologizing, some of the words I'm, I'm not hearing everyone on the council, but I'll try to answer this best I can. So the plan is absolutely to put townhomes, just so we can get going on the, on the residential piece. And, you know, I've talked to a couple of council members, you know, if something came along that said, hey, look, you know, maybe we want, uh. A lot here on the, you know, corner. Now Stuart's saying that that's not, he says, right now, he says, we're gonna get much better. Opportunities on the south side of twenty six hundred south, both Stuart and Bill. But, you know, is that something we could sit down with the? The council and we, absolutely, you know, if there's ideas down the road that come in. Um, I'm not opposed to that. One other thing I'd like to bring up real quick, since I know it. Um, when you put residential areas in a commercial zone. It really limits, uh, possibilities of taking out mortgages, because there's all kind of additional stipulations. It would be really hard. To do. So I just wanna, being in the mortgage industry, that is one thing that. You know, I've had to deal with it a couple of times and it's just, it's a mess. And so, anyway, cause they want residential homes and residential, residentially zoned areas. And so, anyway, just to clarify on that. So, yeah, I, you know, we want it, we want to be good partners, like Joel said.
Nathan?
Yeah, so I, I see this as evidence that we need to make some changes in our offices. Uh, from the comments just made, I think that this is a great opportunity. To sit down with both this proponent and others. And identify what barriers exist for. Things like what I just talked about, or. There's one area that we allow this kind of to get. So it's right here, and that's it. And. I think it's, we need to make a new one, or we need to make changes to RM, which I know what they're working on. And I just see this as an opportunity, so. Yeah, I, I, I'm, that's what I'd like to see between one and two, is asking this proponent. What are the barriers? Uh, they're open to what I just talked about. Mixed residential and commercial use in this specific lot in question. Because I'd be very willing to. Zone this to a existing zone or a future zone that allows that. Almost actually requires it. Cause it makes sense. It's a look, it's an awkward shape. Now you're gonna get like a pad or anything, but. If you mix it with some cool, unique designs, then we could actually have something pretty neat. Um, I guess I'm open to it. I just don't know how much the proponent is up to it. It sounds like they're willing. See for number two.
Let me add a little bit to that. I'm not, I'm not gonna get into every policy discussion, the legislative things that I think we should be thinking about. But I will say this about the RM zone, and I will say this about what Nibbly City has done with this proposal. There is. Only one area in this town. That is zoned to the highest intensity residential use. The most intensive use, the most intensive residential number of units. Per acre. There's one area in this town. We're talking about the map now. There's only one. And it belongs to this one. So. We have, you know, come a ways with this opponent. I don't think there's, uh, I'll, I'll wait for, uh. Uh, I, I won't say that we have not worked with the proponent, but so far, they're the only ones that has RM. So. What does that tell us about our familiarity? That's why the planning commission's, you know, trying to figure out what part it's actually gonna do. Is that really a tested zone? But there's only one, and it's on the parcel east of the one that we're talking about. It's already zoned out right now. Had to learn. Nathan?
Which density of the one of twenty two hundred south?
The five, sixteen?
One, no, one.
I think it's fifteen units per acre, but that was, that was. Through development agreement, annexation agreement, just a different, different thing there, yeah.
And if I. That proponent left Logan because of the requirement talking about. Doesn't mean that it's not good for Nibbly. Anyway, uh. I think we're gonna get to the nitty gritty of mess when we get to second reading. So, the motion is for first reading, unless we change that, I'm gonna. I'm gonna shut up about my own opinions and what I think as a legislative branch or legislative body we should do. I wait for the voting for first reading. Same objection, let's get a, uh, voice vote. This is to approve. Say it again, Farm. Item fourteen, twenty five, this is to approve. Ordinance twenty five oh seven, I started reading through the book. Uh, for first reading, which would modify the RM back. No one clear? Okay, voice vote doesn't favorably set up, I, you opposed? Okay, motion passes, we'll bring it back. So the next thing on the agenda is really just the formal follow-up. Right? We're, because our end sets a special zone, one that we don't have experience with, that requires some extra step. So on and so forth. We can change the map, but that doesn't actually change the zone. Of the, of the. Area underneath the map. So this is the proposal to change the zone of the same area. Am I correct on that? Levi?
I'd be motion to approve ordinance twenty five oh eight for first reading.
Motion to approve. I'm not gonna repeat it. Tell someone second, if they get it. Now I have a motion in a second, uh, to approve twenty five oh eight. Uh, rezone in the same area that we're talking about for first reading. Discussion, please. I'm gonna call for a vote, unless you're opposed to it. Okay, anyone, uh, all those in favor for first reading on ordinance twenty five oh eight, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, fine, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, I think that takes care of you, Wes, Al, and Joel. You're welcome to stay and see what's going on south of you. That's the next thing on the agenda. I'm gonna dive right into it. Guys, good? Good. Okay, this is, uh.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. This is ordinance twenty five eleven, annexation and zoning for three parcels. Uh, down between twelve hundred west and fifteen hundred west, uh, going to about four thousand south. And this is, this is actually. Have we talked about this before?
Yeah, this is second reading.
Again, item sixteen, I think it says first reading. Oh, okay, it's in the back of this. This is for second reading. Okay.
Levi? Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief on this one. Uh, there, there were a number of, um, items that, that the council asked staff to. Uh, discuss and, and consider and do some research on. We, we've started that, we've engaged with the. Um, with the app, both applicants. We had a, we had a good meeting with them to talk about. You know, loo- looking at, eh, the road and ways to improve the, that road, specifically fifteen hundred west and the gap between. Where Nibbly ends now and where, where it would pick up if, if this is approved. And, uh, the. The applicant is doing some more research on, on costs of, of, and, and what they could potentially bring to the table for that. So, we, uh, as, as staff recommend to continue this item to. Get, get, get that, uh, information to you. It's not, it's not quite ready for you tonight. The applicant has, has agreed that, you know, they're okay with waiting those, those additional three weeks for, for that. Uh, so. So, yeah, it's kind of. Uh, we, we hope, we hope to bring you more information at the next meeting. But if, if, if you have anything additional you want, uh. To, to bring back or, or anything else, you know, we're happy to. If, if you want to discuss any of that, but, but in general, we, we ask council to continue this item.
Uh, we appreciate your work on it. Uh, there, there were some sticky wickets to get through. When we looked at that the last time, so it's, it's not surprising that Tom and Levi are still trying to figure that out with, with the proponent, with the developer. So, talk to you, Garrett.
We're good partners.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they're trying to find a solution, I think is what you're saying. Yep, yeah.
I'm making a motion to continue.
And is that motion until our next meeting? Okay, thank you. Second from, are we on a motion to continue ordinance twenty five? Until the council's next meeting. Discussion on the motion to continue. Keep it up, guys. Okay, I think if those in favor, please say aye. I'm not gonna be opposed. That's the end of the. Stuff.
Good job, staff, good job, councils.
We do have, we do have staff. I am thinking today. Let's pace ourselves. Uh, Norm, you wanna start for us tonight?
Yeah. Nothing to report other than I had a grandbaby. Thanks. Well, I, and I appreciate having, uh, the company presentation on our parks. I know we do a lot, but we don't give credit for it. Still, still, thank you.
Yeah, please pass that along. Jerry's phone watching us. Nathan, how about you?
Um. I, I think I want to say that, uh, I've talked to the schedule time chat about. Or enforcement and relationship with the sheriff's office. Question there. The other thing is, uh, I'm talking to Wes today. Uh, and his assistants called me about a unique experience. Where it seems to be a biker gang. Uh, unidentified youth. Um, and like non-migrants that are using the, uh, islands as well as the barrier for, uh, uh, stone. Mike Park. Uh, reflectors are being knocked off. Uh, he said that it was about, um, forty minutes of him waiting for them to clear the intersection, because they. Film me, et cetera, et cetera. He got out, asked him to move. And just kind of felt helpless, I explained like. Did you call dispatch? Like, there are things you could do here, but. So I don't know if we just can communicate with the sheriff. Now that it's warmer weather, maybe. I know they're patrolling that street already. It's about six P M, it's still in daylight hours. Um, just kind of, uh, individuals that. Block the road is theirs.
So he waited in a vehicle at the intersection for forty minutes. According to what he told you.
According to what was told to me. I thought, yeah. Said they were there before him. There was another vehicle that. At the intersection, guys, we're gonna.
Need to get that bicycle home, correct me.
My bunch of taxmen, because I, I don't, I don't have an action I have to make. Yeah.
Just see how the situation solves it.
And everyone that are usable like that. From the outside.
Been very quiet as well. Appreciate Cheryl forwarding that lesson on. Frank, Frank. It's just always great to have.
No, Frank Smith. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just always good to have people writing. Share.
So I actually, uh, I may have blown it. If I did, I'll wait till the next meeting. I asked Frank. So I actually, uh, I may have blown it, if I did, I'll wait till the next meeting, I asked Frank if he wanted that, uh, put it in the public record, and he said sure. So, I don't know if it goes in the public record for this meeting. We didn't, I mean, he didn't say he wanted it read, he just said it would be fine if it was in the public record. Sorry? Okay.
Um, there's a question, um, we talked last fall about those major center, there were a couple of questions, and so.
Pretty sure, I'll double check.
We have.
And we came to. And then I, I know there have had multiple people, they want to discuss in, in that piece, is that something that you?
Yeah, so my, Justin and I met with school administrators and, uh, they readily, and, and that's what I said in my email, I'll try to remember and say the same thing, um, to each of you individually, uh, and, and, and they, they readily understood that it's a council decision to waive or reduce either impact fees or, uh, uh, review fees from nibbly staff. And I told them, and I think I told you in the letter, let me know.
Right, I just wondered if you had local people tell you?
I have had no one say they want that on the agenda. It doesn't, it's not a final decision, you know? They still owe us the money. I assume they haven't paid it yet. It's, it's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Uh, the last thing, uh, I was gonna bring up was, just had someone tell me today that, speaking of goheads, that they had gone riding with their kids down, have you done twelve west, or I don't even remember, that they had got several blood tires. So I wondered if maybe in our, we have, Sheriff, a little bit added for, uh, things that we control. Um, maybe that's one thing to start about, and if everyone helped me in this, okay, maybe it's, we say this in general.
I would say that not just weeds.
Do I not just weeds?
You mean that people planning the old heads?
Okay, yeah, we're not that good, I remember.
Thank you, Garrett. Just wanted to have, he got on, made on twenty-four messages, kind of. Give her me, all's about it anymore, but. Sweet. Big balance for anything. And, uh, so we, I mean, you know what the, you know what the resolution is?
Yeah.
And, okay. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll admit that I've been negotiating, not negotiating, I've, I've had discussions with staff about stuff, but I don't wanna talk about it in a non-adjaded item. So it is what you guys adopted officially.
I don't know if there was a discussion or talk or something. Something is gonna be forward on that, I don't know, that's. Uh, and then, I wonder if there was a plan next week for the training, who was ongoing?
So are you gonna cover that?
Um, I, I'm gonna.
There's ready to plant a carpool right here on the spot?
So it's, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Larson and Councilmember Lawson. And Manza, sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, that's. So it's Norm and Garrett, yeah, guys, yeah, we'll start though.
Yeah, you can work it out, yeah. It's just gonna make it worse. I just want to know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with you, by now.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, Justin and I talked to you about stuff earlier, thanks for working through that, um, I don't know, you guys probably, someone opened that in a letter, did they be water and water quality, be fast, be fast. There's a webinar that we might wanna pay attention to.
I'll just let you keep it.
Thank you. Uh, I think I don't wanna talk about anything else. Levi?
Uh, just wanted to thank the council, I, I had the opportunity to go to the National Planning Conference, the American Planning Association in Denver this last, last week, great conference, uh, learned a lot there. Denver's an interesting case, it's, it's close, it's in our region, I, I learned a lot about how they've grappled with modern, you know, affordable housing and a lot of different issues, so th- thanks for that opportunity, and, and at the same time, um, Evan was able to go to the Utah, um, Ordnance Compliance Association Conference, uh, which was held in Wendover, and he really, he, he really enjoyed it, he, he really just wanted to say that he, that he appreciates that opportunity to go there, um, they, he, he got certified as, as a compliance officer while he was there, studied in the evening and, and took, you know, took the test on the last, last day. So, um, learned a lot with, Justin and I had a good talk with him on, on things that he learned and, and kinda tied into that network, and I don't think anyone from the city has ever been tied into this, this kinda code enforcement network, so it's, it's good to kind of broaden, broaden that and get that education.
Thanks, Levi, uh, Justin, go ahead.
I don't have anything, unless you got questions for me, I've just been absolutely fair against project and this water rate, so. Anything else, uh, open questions?
I'll try to drag this out for another hour. Figure twelve hundred west, Garrett, thanks for bringing that up, just some of the things we've done as staff. Done speed studies on there, took, have taken vehicle counts, and they're personally measured like distances and things, just make sure that all the intersections were in compliance with N E T C D requirements. Ash tow requirements, which are the basis for guide, or the guide to, to design and build, so. Trying to find something wrong with it, I just, I just can't find anything that's out of compliance. On that note, phase five is out to bid, this extends from just north of twenty-five hundred south up through the Firefly Estates subdivision, it'll add the same bike lanes, it'll have the same concrete mounds, and then it also extends with the bike lanes south of, uh, twenty-nine eighty south, down to near the, the roundabout. But it's out to bid, I've scheduled it so bid opening and stuff, we have enough time to evaluate the bids and bring forward a contract to city council May first for consideration, we'll have a recommendation for you, and it'll most likely be low bid unless there's some math there or a reason to doubt the qualifications of any contractors that would do it. We did make some tweaks to the concrete mounds on the design in this case, we shifted them back a little bit, so they're more in line with where the Jersey Berry, we, we go, and I also lowered them four to four inches, so instead of six inch mountable islands, they're gonna be four inches tall. Much more valuable, we thought. But it also helped with some of the public concerns that we're experiencing. Any questions on that? All right. Ridge Lane Park, having given up on construction of that, next week, I have a meeting on the fifteenth with the U S Fishing Wildlife Service, so they are the governing authority of the protection of the U L A G S dresses, they're coming onsite, they're gonna walk the whole site with us, and we're gonna have the opportunity to describe how we're going to protect this. It's an organ. Um, they've asked, well, or they haven't officially asked, but it's most likely that they're going to ask for that area to be put into a conservation easement. If that's what it takes to get this part done, I really encourage the city council to consider that, is there, just get a head nod, would anybody be opposed to preserving and putting that, that land into conservation easement? I don't know who would hold, pardon? We would have, there is a fee, it depends on who holds that conservation easement, if it's nibbly city that we win, but if, if they wanted to the Department of Natural Resources or. Who's watching the hen house? Yeah. Still leaving grass or anything? Conservation, can you, used to use it in any way, or open space with a trail or anything? So conservation easement would describe what's allowed and what's not. It's the, through negotiation from Fish and Wildlife Service. What we have to do. How much, how much area? Fifteen. It is wetland area. Maybe not quite, that was by the. Two thirds of the total park? So in this particular location, the entire wetland area is considered suitable habitat for the U L A G S dresses. It's gonna, it's a bit, to me, it's gonna be key as to what conservation easements. Exactly, so there's more to that, and, uh, but I think what this allows to do is get this project moving forward. Hopefully, and if it, everything goes right, I anticipate construction starting in September. With completion toward June of next year. Of both phase one and phase two, we have a phase two A and a two B, we applied for a grant to help us with the cost to construct phase two B, which is the bike park, phase two B is the perimeter track and jump line. We've already got funded for the phase two A, which is the interior bike parks and stuff, but. Anyways, good news there.
Would, would it be helpful if this council or mayor comes with that meeting?
I can invite anyone that would like.
Just raise. Councilman will be in St. George.
It's on fifteenth. It's kind of mid morning toward lunch, let me check. Yes.
Okay, you guys go down.
So it's at ten thirty, it'd be onsite.
Oh, yeah, you can do it.
Yeah. And this is start the fishing game, yeah. Yeah. Thirteen hundred west construction. On your manly. Your plan started sometime May to June. They said it shouldn't take long. I, conservatively, I'd say the end of July, but about ten. I had the opportunity to work with Aaron on a pedestrian crossing investigation and analysis on thirty-two hundred south. This would provide a crossing from Ridge Lane Park to Andrew Park, looked at three different locations, vetted out the pros and cons of each ones, and through some iterations, and some really great conversation, we decided on a location that goes on the east side of three forty west. That crosses through toward Andrew Park, it would take up about four or five of the, the handicap parking stalls and an, and additional couple other ones, so we're, we're looking at possibly removing everything west of the, the big telephone pole that sits there, the power line that sits there. And then, because of some visibility issues with the actual flashing beacon part, we had to find out a way to move it toward the traveling so people could see it, so it's not twenty feet off the road, so we discussed the how to do that, and we came up with an idea of just tearing up some asphalt, putting a planter box in there, mounting that right into the trap. It would also, because it's such a long or wide road, and long length of, to travel for pedestrians, we decided that we put a center beacon that would act as an area of refuge for travelers to cross in there, so it'll be a, a three beacon installation, would be narrated right in the middle, planter on that south side. Three points of activation of the beacon? Three, yes, yes. It'd be on one end, at the middle. So we're hoping to have designs rather quickly, it's something outside of our staff's resource that we, we really can't get straight as well. I don't have a timeline for that, hopefully by the end of this quarter year, we can have it. Last week, uh, we, I've ordered some streetlights, we have about eight thousand dollars budgeted in this year's budget to look at streetlights at various locations, turns out we can only get about two, and those two actually exceed the eight thousand dollars, about eighty-six hundred dollars if I remember right. We selected two locations along the highway, there's some really dark spots and some intersections along Highway nine ninety-one. One's at twenty-six hundred south, should have been done when they did the road, it didn't get done, but there's danger there, so we, we're gonna mitigate that with a, a light there. Then the other one is, it's at Heritage Parkway, or excuse me, nibbly Parkway, it's right by the young trailer shop there. And that'd be another location that we'll have that in, we're working through work orders with Rock Mountain Fire, but as soon as we get that all done and contracted, they should have this, this summer. Uh, so I, I bring that up, just as we're working in this budget year, if there's more locations that you're concerned with, let's have those discussions, we can get that added to this year's budget. And if you have those locations, let us know what, what those are, we still have, Aaron, we, we talked about an additional location for one more crossing, just think about it, get with us when. Good point, good, though, I'll keep you posted, thanks for your help on that. Thanks for your help on that, okay, I don't know if you wanna share anything with the council on how that went, okay? Unless you have questions? Hey, Gerald.
So myself, with the work staff, we've been up to date, sure season all, four years over the past two days, we have six additional reviews. We have so many applicants, which is good. A lot of those applicants have been moved by other groups to the forum, so, um, we're getting through, nibbly is a great place to work, something we haven't. Um, the interlocal agreement for election services showed up in the county today, and it is not going up, and actually put down. Uh, especially if we get beacon use, because a lot of that contract is based on postage. Um, and, uh, the, the ordinance passed by the council, um, changing the deli- the delinquency fee piece, uh, Wendy, they had a letter to those officials that we considered, and then um, she, we've got this response, I'm just gonna read this letter from her. Dear Mayor Jacobson and City Councilmembers, I want to bring up the update regarding recent changes by T N W City Code fifteen point oh two point zero. Yesterday, we have built sixty percent, so subject to utilization under next code. The response so far has been overall, we can do, incident, someone they pay their. Governments express their understanding and change during the, to the same. That works. Expressor of the standing is changed during to the same this. Then yesterday, we're. This is a fantastic start. Let's try to step forward something. Get back. So, but there's been a lot of excited, excited talking. This and they just want me to express their appreciation of their.
We wrote the letter that went out, the the link with bills and they explained. Maybe explain the change that we adopted and all that.
They're good on them.
Uh, just a reminder, Saturday, uh nineteen will be our green clean up here. Uh, convenient, we'll have indoor bins and a metal bin. Of bean waste will still be taken along, so. Be open for May one. Guys out there, take care of it.
Wait, you said garbage bins and metal bins?
Yeah.
And green waste?
No.
No, right. No, individuals take their green. Is the metal bin a recycle bin?
That's a dump drop bed that will go to the recycle bin.
That's, thank you.
Um, I just wanted to express a point I think too, you know, I'll give a presentation. I feel like really emphasize this. Parks, what he did, but not all public works, you know. We have a high performing staff there, so I just really. Want them all to be recognized because what he. Put out there for you guys to see, essentially four guys take care of a lot of work, so. And every other department has that same responsibility, so. I just, I thank you for the support that you give us to allow us to bring these people in that you might. Make this efficient for us. So, thank you.
Who who would you like to see next?
Open water. I told Jared to get ready. I have, I told him to get ready tonight first.
Okay.
So water, water, I'm sure that'll get. I can switch to Eli.
Yeah, I just want to thank the folks for. Being not asleep. I think I did have my back on ground. My stuff, mine stops. Still walk, Billy. I saw a change. I didn't know you guys done it, but. Message from Tom, but.
All that was uh. So. Think I got cleaned out right as I heard it came. And we've noticed it been back up again on my. So when we unplugged out of the tennis line, it boiled for two days. There was not much water that was released. I mean, it was boiling. So.
So if I could clarify. So we have some land drains that run across the property from the subdivision that Nate lives over to the west to the slough. Some of it goes through. Out through Malouf and then there's we there. We've always heard about or thought there was this other. That. Can't, we never found the end of it. We never did any more to investigate it, but the the one, kind of the big main one. Was back in seventeen when all that flooding, when the had that. Anyway. Uh, you know, we unplugged it then because what happens is it's the the water moves through these uh. Pipes and the trees get their way into the pipes and and it was like completely plugged off. So. The pictures are amazing. You'll see they pull the root ball out. It's forty feet long and this big around.
That should be on YouTube.
Yeah. So the Malouf one, we've been, we've known and we've had troubles and we've we've kept it clean, but 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 Steve went out and actually. And had similar experience with the other one, got it cleaned out. So now we have two very functioning land rains that run in the area. So. Yeah, that's a great.
And what's the effect in there? All the time because they have.
Okay, so what's the amount of water in the basement?
Water can.
In basements.
Get those on the G I S, right?
And we extended, we we actually. Out in the slough. The pipes are out in, out of the vegetation. So hopefully we can. Put a twenty foot piece of pipe on. As a boy, you can see himself.
Super big, super good.
It's a little different here.
It is a little bit. We died it. Dompus and dying. This is what's really crazy is. Die come out of both outlets. It's park. He put it in the park and die come out in two hours. I don't know.
Land drain man, I told you this, there's clean. Stream we can call that.
I had to go up the lower. And then the excavator. And I had a dam built up here. Hope slowly just. Clean it so I can get the base of the pipe. He's going to get a piece of rebar and hook it and show them that they're pulling through. Two brought the whole root ball. While the excavators blow. Since it came so fast out. That was intense.
All we saw was the monkey trying to put the cork back in.
Yeah. Nice. Long nights. Yes.
Like vernaculars.
Rock will be. Fine, so. Here it fall up and all of you.
Yeah.
I think we should have public works as our just the presentation and.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, Nick, do you have anything for us? Jay, go.